And we apologize for the delay. We did have some things we need to discuss in executive session. So, but everyone, please join me in pledge allegiance. The flag is this one.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So I will say that we met in executive session just prior to this meeting to discuss matters of real estate and personnel. So, public participation. I guess you could just stand up at your seat unless you want to come up here or...
I'll come up there. All of the microphones working too.
Yeah, so we're good. Tish, you want to stand back there? You want to...
I'll just stand right here by my... Tish, yeah? Do you want me to pass out? Yeah, that would be wonderful. I'm going to speak here because I know this is a meeting that...
Pass him down. It's easier that way because we can't crawl over each other.
So, good evening.
Take two and pass him down.
Jane, I'm going to start, okay?
Yes, go.
Good evening. I'm Tish Long. I am president of the Willow's Park Reserve Board of Directors. I had hoped to discuss this information privately at a joint meeting of the Willow's Park Reserve Board and the Board of Commissioners, but since our meeting invitation is still pending, I appear instead. When Willow's Park Reserve began this worthwhile endeavor to transform a neglected mansion into a dynamic community center, our scope of work was defined as the mansion proper, with a small acreage of land around its perimeter. In the lease, it is called "The Leased Premises." That loosely changed during the architectural planning phase, as Radnor Township staff saw project add-ons that exceeded our footprint and scope. Those add-ons were significant infrastructure improvements, more in line with public works endeavors than mansion renovation tasks. They included such things as expanding the parking lot and adding new lighting, widening the driveway, and bringing new utility lines from the street to the mansion, a huge task since they run beneath the pond and the stream. The cost of these add-ons, should they move forward, would likely exceed the funds that the township has already appropriated for the mansion's renovations. There is 1.6 million remaining of the 1.8 million after the completion of the architectural work, forensic study, and project startup. Improvements like the ones I just mentioned and others such as new signage, landscaping, and lighting at the entrances, roadway resurfacing and sprucing up of the cottage exterior are big-picture considerations that would likely cost an additional $2 million to execute. We agree that the staff-proposed improvements would better the visitor experience and are very sound long-term investments. That being said, this is not work that we can take on. Our focus is the house, which suffers from years of neglect and deferred maintenance, and the need to be redesigned for its new mission. But the township certainly met, and whether you choose to do it today, tomorrow, next week, it will be money well-spent as this property is your most valuable public asset. The utility work, for example, was budgeted by your predecessors, but that work was never started. Perhaps the funds are still available. Bill might be able to tell us later. As I see it, many of the pressing problems facing our township today are the direct result of pervasive short-term decision-making without fully understanding the cumulative impact of those decisions. We understand that each budget year brings new pressures, emergencies, distractions which perpetuate this cycle. If it looks good on paper and the numbers work, it's approved with barely a thought to what that may mean 10 years from now. Deferring only allows the underlying problems to grow and compound. We see that now with area flooding, changing climate conditions combined with increased density has resulted in a situation that is irreversible and proving hard, if not impossible, to mitigate. I know you're thinking that we have 1,000 pressing problems on your worry list and reinvesting in the Willow's isn't a top priority. I caution you to think again and let history be your guide. It's 50 years with that exact rationale that has got us to where we are today. The revenue spigot was wide open on the mansion for years until it was too old and tired to compete with other venues. Money was made, but not reinvested. The shuttered, dilapidated house that we see today is a direct result of putting things off, kicking the can down the road, so to speak, for someone else to handle. This was the thinking of your predecessors. Now it's your turn to handle this. Now the township's asset is in a state of disrepair with an 80-year-old failing roof and operating systems. Some members of your board have expressed concern over the 1.8 million appropriated for the mansion. If you prorate that over 50 years, it's equivalent to $36,000 of annual property maintenance and repair, which is about right for the size of the house. Others have balked at our recommendation to pledge the committed funds now to make the building watertight and protect it from future damage. Whose dollars go in first and whether it's equally matched is a sticking point. At the end of the day, it's the WPP and its donors who will contribute more than 2/3 of the total cost of renovation, and the township will own a significantly improved asset. Private funders are eager to contribute, but without a commitment from the township, they are justifiably wary. The bottom line is this: pointing fingers and splitting hairs is easy; finding solutions is hard; coming together and partnering takes fortitude and 100% commitment. The naysayers will bear down and their loud voices will echo, but together we will prevail. Through our combined strength and commitment, a viable path to a long-term, sustainable future can be found. This precious parcel, its mansion and all its natural attributes, is, in many ways, the answer to the problems facing the township today. The pond and streams, trees and meadows create natural water retention while cleaning our air and filtering our water supply. Having a retreat like this open every day to the public as a respite for modern-day life is a priceless gift to area residents, one that will yield positive health and relationship benefits for generations to come. Radnor Township will blaze a trail that other townships will follow, and this idea of repurposing community assets in this way will catch on. The mansion and its park will become a popular regional destination drawing people from far and wide. It will bring significant new revenue to the area businesses, community here tonight. We estimate that every dollar spent on Willow's reinvestment, $2 will be respent in the multiplier effect. All of that information is in the recently completed economic study, which each of you have been given a copy. It also shows that at the end of five years, the return on investment will be a net positive 11% on the township's investment. The social return on investment, which includes social and environmental factors, will be 12%. In short, investing in the Willow's is a smart business decision with a very impressive return on investment. I call upon you to work with us and adopt the proposed lease amendments as they are conceived, so we can move forward and get this done for the people. And if the public works projects that I described earlier are in fact a priority to township commissioners and staff, please fund them silently so that the 1.6 million remaining can be used for the pressing work that makes the mansion watertight. I thank you for your time and your consideration, and we look forward to meeting you soon. Thank you.
Madam President? Just to respond to the comments that were made, a lot of those are not factual, they're not true. The township committed $1.8 million with the idea that that one commitment of $1.8 million would be to go ahead and lure those sponsors and funders. So that's not true. The $1.6 million or $1.8 million was specified that those were to go for those public improvements, that you talked about, water, sewer lines. They were. So that's fact. We can distort that, we can make all this kind of things up here, especially I take offense when staff, it's staff's recommendations to go ahead and make these public improvements. That's wrong. That's based on this group and this organization of what you want to see in this. This, I believe, is one of those, well, let's keep the hook into it and let's keep moving it on here with more township money. The $1.8 million was made crystal clear of what those were: water line replacement. Any of those improvements were factual. That's what the board approved and what the board set aside.
Thank you, Mrs. Kancy. Just Tish and all of you, all those are here from Willow's Park Reserve. We will be reaching out, and there will be a meeting to happen in sometime early next week, as soon as our sister is mobile again.
Wonderful.
So, yes, so that will happen. Okay? Thank you very much for being here this evening.
Thank you.
Next, for public comment.
Hi. I'm here on a general request that I've made before, and I think it's really smart and it's funny that we just had a presenter from the Willow's Park Reserve, and it sounds like a great thing, but I don't see a lot of revenue generation from that area of the township. And I've asked this before to prove what I know after coming to these meetings for eight years. The fact is that an inordinate amount of money has gone out in that corner, an ungodly amount. And it is a nice thing to preserve the house. If private people came in and the township was quarterized at 1.8 million... So Bob is right. There was never any discussion that it would go further. 1.8 million for whatever could be done there. It didn't include, you know, the budget going, I think it was five-fold increase or something like that, and for whatever reasons, economics, the way it has to be bid, it was, we're going to stretch and give you 1.8 million, because no other board was willing to do that before. And I thought that was great, because there was a private person who doesn't live here who came in generously with a million dollars too, that sort of fomented the 1.8 million from the board. So that's the complete history as people know it today, because a lot of these meetings are private, and I always thought that they were supposed to be in the public. I would like the, any more allocative or lease changes to be public. That's one of my things. But the reason I came tonight was not the Willow's. It was really, we, Tish said some good things in that we do willy-nilly, and what I've suggested every January is the same thing, and I'd really like a discussion tonight. Where is our one, five, and 10-year analysis of how we have allocated capital funding per ward and for what reason, and what the return has been? Now, look, a B consult will tell you anything you want if you pay them, okay? Just like any appraisal will get you your price up. So I would like us to spend a little money to look at the one, five, and 10-year allocation of capital, okay, in the wards, because I can tell you, my ward, Ward 1, totally short-changed. And I will sit with you to prove that, that we know this, okay? And yet probably the second or first generator of tax dollars. So why aren't we investing in winners versus maybe startups? And I think that we're losing market share. I've been saying this for three years now, even before you were elected. One of my big thesis's has always been, as soon as King of Prussia opened, we're going to be in trouble. And then Ardmore started turning around, Bob's been there with me, Westchester is on fire, Berwyn. We're, we're filling in infill spaces, and you know who we get? We get the liquor store to expand. Wow, okay? The Pennsylvania Liquor Store expanded from one location to a prime location, instead of something unique and dynamic. And, you know, there's some interesting ideas being floated around, like the King of Prussia bid situation, that might, that might help and defray some of your costs and manpower. And I think that we really have to look at the heartbeat of our township, and that asset, and the only asset that anybody could argue, is the Town of Wayne. That is the heartbeat. So if we are going to be a second-class citizen on the township, on the Town of Wayne, then we're in really big trouble, because that really, besides the school, it's the Town of Wayne. And if that loses its coolness and market share, as it is to Ardmore and other places, then our residential values will not increase at the same pace as our competitors. And that's simply not fair. That is your job. That is your job here, to keep us safe and to keep our residential and business assets growing in value. So I ask this, that you, let's get Carfac or whatever's left of Carfac to do an analysis with maybe a few dollars on an outside, and now, you know, consultant, that looks at what we've actually spent amongst the wards. How can you reallocate in the going future if you don't know what you've spent? Because I can tell you, over-invested in one area, there are very few people living, and they're not willing, and I don't see any generosity from them, okay?
You mean the fifth ward?
Fifth, and maybe it bleeds into a little of the other ward, a little of fours down there too.
I'm going to guess you're talking about the fourth ward.
Oh, fourth ward, sorry.
It's fourth and, there's a little fifth and there's a little fourth.
No, there is none.
We're not going to argue with it.
It's down there. It's down there. You guys keep redistricting.
Fourth ward, your township's...
You keep redistricting, how can I keep up? You keep redistricting.
Fourth ward, fourth ward.
And the other thing that I've said before, and I just, I know I keep going by the beautiful Penn Medicine Project, and I counsel you to get ahead of that on the tax reassessment and maybe get Bill with somebody outside and get a strategy, because they're going to come, and it's going to be lower than what we would expect. And so let's get our ducks in order, and when we have to get them reassessed when that project's finished, we're happy with the result, because Richard really worked hard on that, and everybody did. So let's get a fair assessment of that project. Thank you.
Do you guys want to talk about damp little kids, just so that I can jump out here? The kids are talking? The kids are going to the public?
Awesome.
Who wants to participate?
I love it!
Do you want to introduce yourself?
Hi, I'm Jacob, and I live on 509 North Wayne Avenue, and I'm going to talk about the sidewalk that we really want to get.
Excellent. Good job. Thank you!
Yes, my name's Jeff Berger. So we live at 509 North Wayne, just a little bit north of Eagle, and my family and I are here to talk about the sidewalk project, and I appreciate the opportunity to do so. So, as, you know, as many of you know, so the state has granted $250,000 for the construction of a sidewalk from north, from Eagle, north up to Woodsworth Court, and in our opinion, it's, it's a really essential project. It's not really a project, you know, the importance of it is not so much walkability as much as safety, because the reality is that, you know, the foot traffic is already there. It's just a question of making it safe. As King of Prussia has grown, more and more traffic heads north on North Wayne Avenue, the speeds are entirely excessive. I think a lot of work's been done to try to curtail that, but still, it's a 25-mile-an-hour street, and it's 45 mile-an-hour, cars that are going there left and right. And, you know, and so every morning when I pull out of the driveway, there is either a middle-schooler coming down from Woodsworth Court, coming to Wayne. There is, you know, there are people who are walking down to get to the train station, there are employees walking up to the Church of the Savior, and it's, and it's really precarious, and it really is just a matter of time before something happens. You know, even walking with this guy trying to get to Wayne, I mean, it's like, cars are coming, and it's like, you know, we're moving him off to the side. And, and, and this is like, it's an everyday issue. And so it concerns me, you know, as a physician, as someone who's taking care of patients with brain injuries, you know, this is, this is, it's not a safe situation. And I think that we have a really golden opportunity where the state has handed over funds, and I understand that, that funds are not easy to come by, but I think if we're not going to spend it on, on safety, I mean, what, you know, why are we here? It's, you know, safety to protect our residents. And I think this is, in my opinion, this is, you know, a very worthwhile cause and use of funds. Whatever you guys can do to, to make it happen would really improve the quality of our lives and the safety of our kids. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for being here. Thank you both for being here.
Thank you very much.
So, it feels like, it feels like, if you're biking on the glass and there's no sidewalk, and it's bumpy, you might fall down onto the road, but if it's a sidewalk and sidewalks are smooth, there's a 0% chance that you...
Thank you.
Very good argument. Very good. Is there any other public comments?
So I'm also here about the sidewalk, and first of all, I'd like to thank you guys for listening to us speak about this today.
You just said your name.
Caroline Dampier. I live at 513 North Wayne Ave. I have a two-and-a-half-year-old daughter, and, you know, for us, this is a critical safety emergency. And, you know, our, our road right there at North Wayne Ave is a artery road for the SEPTA, for downtown Wayne, for the schools, whether they're driving or kids are walking, and for commuter parents. I walk to the SEPTA there every day, and sidewalk access, you know, is pretty much present from Eagle Road through North Wayne Ave, South Wayne Ave, all the way to Conestoga, but stops right before our house, when there's about 300 yards left in the township. And, you know, we have a petition with us today of, you know, it's a 220-yard distance from Eagle Road to Woodsworth Court. Those are the last two streets before the township ends on the right-hand side. It's a really short distance, but there are a lot of families and a lot of parents commuting from there. The grant we got from the state was given to us in 2017, and it covers project costs through 2020. And so those are project costs. So in order to be reimbursed for them, the project needs to be up and running. So time is really critical on that point, and from the estimate that we got, the grant should cover a significant portion of the budget for the project. And, you know, something that really hit home for me in terms of the safety emergency is, was on April 12, when there were several reports to the Radnor Police Department of a car that, someone who was recklessly driving and spotted throughout the township, including driving into oncoming traffic and almost hitting a school bus full of kids in the middle of the afternoon on a Friday. He was arrested, he was charged with narcotic possession, DUI, among other crimes, and a few days after that, the following week, I was walking home from the train station, and in that, so for me, it's about 100 yards from Eagle Road to my driveway, and where I'm picking up my two-year-old, just like Jeff said he did to his kids, there were really deep tire marks of a car that had swerved through there. And that is, I can say I walk that strip every single day, and there's not one time that I haven't thought about my daughter and her safety, and if someone were to drive out of control or be drunk or under the influence, it's not something you can control. I won't be able to think fast enough. And so to see that a car really did do that really made it, sort of, it made it an emergency for me. So with the grant, with the time that we have left on it until June 2020, I would really, really appreciate any consideration, you know, and a serious look at what the financial cost for this project would be.
Thank you.
I just wanted to add to that, that we have the middle school, sorry, Gretchen Bond, sorry, Gretchen Bond, seven, my husband has a formal speech, 7 Woodsworth Court. We have the kids that get to go on, on their own, and there's no shot of them biking down to Wayne, because it's just a ditch. And there is plenty of room to put a sidewalk, I mean, there's, there's a lot of room.
You can take her out.
Yeah, and so I, I have, like, you're so scared, but like, you're, I can't even, I'm not even with ours. We just let them go, and it's, and it's scary, and it's not much area, and I know you guys have put the 25 mile-an-hour thing there, but no, but people like whip through there, and if one person's texting, you know, our kid's gone.
Can I add something? Sorry, Liz Berger, Jeff's wife, 509 North Wayne. We also, we have a, you know, age ranges here. We have almost middle school or high school, and this little guy. And we've lived in our house for six years, and when we moved in, we looked for a house that was walked to Wayne for three years, every day, three years, walked to Wayne. It's really what we wanted, because we love the town so much. But a huge consideration was, how do you get there? We thought, oh, you want to walk up, you know, and then we started trying to do it, said, this is completely not okay. So fortunately for us, we have a great relationship with our neighbors. We go through their property down that, like, it would be oak, but it's not really oak, it doesn't really have a name, that little, like, cul-de-sac off of Eagle. We go through their property, then we walk down there, and we cross in the middle of Eagle, which is horrible. And now that our kids, it's fine, I mean, it was okay when we're with our kids, but the whole point of us moving to Wayne is that so that our teenagers and our middle-schoolers could have a level of independence, that, you know, I grew up in Haver Town, I walked everywhere, there was sidewalks everywhere, so that our kids could have that. And that is a huge issue, as I said, about assets, people and young families looking to move into our neighborhoods, that's, that's a significant issue. They want to be able to get into town, and they want to get there safely, and as their kids get older, they want their kids to be able to get there safely. So, you know, for us, it's the, the little ones, it's like, but as Gretchen said, when you have older kids and you want them to, they don't want you walking them up.
We're so close. Like, we're so absolutely walked away, that, that the fact that we can't really safely walk there is what stinks.
But it's also, I'm sorry, I wanted to also say that it's not just our houses on North, it's all those other houses, because we were, we'd be happy with all those people walking through our property to get to our sidewalk, so that those kids don't have to cross in the middle of Eagle, where there's no crosswalk and no light.
Yeah, all the woodland court people can come through us.
Mm-hmm. So a lot of houses.
Great, thank you. This is our daughter.
Same topic. My name is Chris Bond, and for the past 13 years, I've lived with my wife and three kids at 7 Woodsworth Court, and I'm here to support the sidewalk project. Probably against better judgment, we've made the perilous walk up and down the unsidewalk portion of North Wayne Avenue campus times, both with my kids who went out. I've had a number of close calls with cars just ripping by us, and with the important rise of distracted drivers on our roads, it doesn't take a lot of imagination to picture something worse than a close call. I'd say in addition to the obvious and much-needed improvement to safety, having a sidewalk allows the affected residents to truly enjoy the walk-to-Wayne lifestyle. It would most certainly cut down the congestion in Wayne, which has gotten to mind-blowing levels. It would improve the overall desirability of the neighborhood, and it would likely drive more business income to the operators of the businesses in Wayne. This project was awarded a grant in 2017 for virtually nothing, has taken place over the past year and a half. We are concerned, tax paying and voting, residents of Radnor Township, and we respectfully ask that you move this project forward and not allow this guy to have to expire. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Deana Honesty. I live at 548 North Wayne Avenue. We moved into our house in 2012, when our daughter was four years old. We, when Jim Higgins started this process, we assumed we'd have a sidewalk by the time she went to middle school. Well, she's going to middle school in September. She will not be able to walk to school with all of her friends that live in our neighborhood, that we are a part of, the neighborhood of North Wayne, because I cannot allow her to walk on that road by herself. We fought, I witnessed the fight for years to keep the middle school in downtown Wayne. All those arguments for keeping the middle school in downtown Wayne apply to having a sidewalk that goes to Woodsworth Court and doesn't exclude one small section of North and South Wayne from having a sidewalk and being able to be a true walk-to-Wayne home. I also think if there's a sidewalk, while it's maybe not a huge difference, there will be a curb, a curb that a car will hit as it swerves off the road, when they're looking at their phone or looking away, and that'll be a slight protection for anyone walking on the side of the road. I urge you to not let this money that we've been granted go to waste. I am under the understanding that the studies have been done, and the township, it has already cost the township $30,000 just to figure out the breadth and the cost of the entire project. It would really be a shame for us to let this 250,000 from the state go back and go to some other township.
Good evening, Jayce Honesty, 548 North Wayne. Just in addition to what my wife had said, I mean, many of the folks here have alluded to it, but it's a ditch. I mean, no FNs are butted. We're not walking on folks' front yards that are flat and, you know, crossing across their nice turf. It's a ditch. When it gets closer to the intersection, it's, it's the end of the ditch, the gully, that ultimately that intersection floods at some level. There is no safe crossing at North Wayne. The sightlines are awful, the drain bodies stick up out of the ground, so if you cut the corner too steep, or too tight with your car, you're ripping your rims or your tires. So there's other improvements there, other than just the sheer walkability of the improvement. I imagine, you know, the town professionals would probably tell you that the signal's probably ready for an upgrade at some level. I mean, we live on North Wayne Ave, everybody can tell you that, you know, I'll call it, one of three Radnor Fire Company calls comes past us, either going to cover for Trufer in Berwyn, somewhere out of the township comes roaring down our street, so. and Berwin, somewhere out of the township comes roaring down our street, so. To think that we got 50 cents of a dollar or 40 cents of a dollar, whatever the grant Mr. Higgins got for us was outstanding and appreciated, and to give the body here almost two years to plan for it, I think it's a disgrace if we actually let that grant evaporate. And, you know, and I apologize for the folks that are here for the mansion, but to think that Mr. Zankowski has $1.8 billion in the bucket for a mansion that nobody is arguably going to use for any, I'll call it, positive benefit, that's disturbing, that we would even put any money out there. It's a great sledding hill, it's a great park, it's a great fishing pond, but I gotta tell you, young people aren't having, I'll call it, country club and mansion weddings anymore. So if you're thinking about it for that kind of use, that's an awful, awful change of money. Give it to the downtown district. I saw we're finally putting a little brick crosswalk back and things like that. Do a parking garage study for downtown something, but, you know, $1.8 billion with Willows, and we're not going to get a sidewalk to extend the Radnor boundary, which hopefully may encourage Triferne to, you know, invest something, apply for their own grant. I mean, I don't even know how big the church of the Savior is, but I imagine some of Radnor comes and goes from there, whether it's their kids are in that little daycare or the services they're having there. But we have an opportunity to really, you know, as we talk about Wayne, you know, it may be only 20 or 30 homes that are really affected, but there are people that work at that church. I see them every morning. Rain or shine, sleet or snow, they're walking in that ditch. I don't know if they're going through there, over to Valley Ford, over to St. David's, but they're going somewhere. So I encourage you not to walk away from 50 cents of the dollar, especially if there's other projects as such that are just, I'll call it, minimal value. And I apologize, we have to leave because we have work to do.
Thanks, guys.
No problem.
Thank you, thank you all for being here.
Chris Todd, WBA, get that guy's name and address.
I know, thank you.
Wait, wait, I'm right here, it's 548 North Wayne.
Chris Todd, Wayne Business Association, here with some board members and residents. Just want to reiterate what we've been talking about for the past year, AKA five to eight years. It's been great, they actually, some people already talked about it, you know, people have moved here to Walk to Wayne. We've had the economic study already done, the WBO date. We have landscaped the corners, thanks, with working with the township and the Radnor Hands of Trust and the board, obviously. So eventually, there'll be plants where there is now dirt, not rocks. But there's two other assets we were talking about at the beginning of the year, and that is the repaving of the lots and parking spots, as well as a new tree scape, I'm going to call it, just planting new trees, uniform. There's a lot of trees that have been taken down. There are two dead ones right on the Lancaster Ave, in front of Santan Daire and the new liquor store, that are obviously dangerous now because they are dead. And making sure those are funded. I know that there's some, there's a budget already, we could do these two, the last two projects, the now projects, for about a half million dollars, from what I understand. And I know there's also been a talk about studies, a $4 million street scape, which is great, but we've been talking, I've been here for 20 years, I've driven down North Wayne Avenue for 20 years, by the way, and it is a lot busier in that section of people and pedestrians, I can vouch for that. Shoot, I lost my train of thought. Street scape, great idea. WBA is asking for these two now projects, so we can actually look fresh, look new, and compete with the new town centers going up everywhere. Want to do a street scape and that kind of stuff, that's going to take years, we know that, and we're not going to argue with that, that sounds great. But these are things, things that we're talking about doing now, this year, can be done, and a new street scape can be worked around what we're doing. So we just want to make sure that's still on everybody's mind as we go into capital budget meeting or planning, and these are this year's projects we're asking for. All right?
Thank you, Chris. Any additional public comments?
I would just add one thing that, you know, I can definitely appreciate the capital needs for, you know, everyone in this room, and then, you know, everything in general, you know, the town is, you know, a premier town in Philadelphia suburbs and is beautiful and has a lot to offer. But I would just say, it, you know, like, you know, said for the $1.8 million for the Willows, when, you know, we're really talking about a critical safety issue that isn't a high cost, you know, the grant is for $250,000, which I think is, you know, give or take a few percent, about 50% of potential budgets, and, you know, that can be, you know, debated, obviously, but it's significant regardless. And, you know, spread out over time, and with the taxpayer dollars, you know, $270,000, you know, which is what we estimated would be the township's responsibility, it just seems small for such a critical issue. You know, and I know that, you know, Delaware County and, you know, the government in general has done a lot of studies on pedestrian accidents and with, you know, distracted driving, with, you know, with the opioid epidemic, especially in our area, on the rise, I think that's still a real straight concern. So I just wanted to highlight, you know, highlight, you know, this issue.
Thank you.
Tom Lowery, 417 North Wayne Avenue. I shovel my sidewalk every winter when it snows, and nobody can walk down it because there's nowhere to go after you get past my house. There's no sidewalk for the people who live up on the 500 block of North Wayne Avenue. So I'd like to shovel for a purpose. So I would request that you grant the money for the sidewalk.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I'm Tim Lowery from 331 South Wayne Avenue. We heard a lot about township assets, township needs, wants, projects. Wondering, is there some type of list or of assets that we should be benchmarking funds toward, so that we don't come up with a thing like the Willows, where we now have to come up with this huge sum of money that we haven't allotted money towards, or we have these really important projects like sidewalks, that now all of a sudden, we've got to come up with this big sum of money? You know, is there a system in place that can allot assets, like a savings account, to account for these projects that are coming down the road?
So I think that's what we're here to talk about tonight, correct? I think it'll be the first time in a very, very, very long time we've had this discussion at all.
That's pointed, yes.
So Lisa, I just, I think maybe you could give clarity in terms of the 1.8, because certainly we support your sidewalks, we really, really do. And that was already pre-allocated, so maybe you can explain the funding that was voted in for the Willows Park Preserve and the project for the Willows.
So Phil, I might turn that over to you for what, to explain what the prior board voted on the 1.8.
So the, I think it was the fall of 2017, the board at the time, after a series of public meetings and discussions about a separate plan regarding the Willows was completed, the board had been presented a list of potential budget numbers for the renovation of the mansion, after some negotiations at the board meeting, 1.8 million, it's actually 1.8 and change, there's, it's a very specific amount. But the board at the time allocated that from various sources within the township's budget. So it was done in the fall of 2017, and we've spent $100,000 to date to the Willows Park Preserve as part of the agreement that we have with them. And then we've also spent $80,000 and some change to an architect for work that they've done, so that's where we're getting down to roughly 1.6 million left allocated for that project.
And just so everyone in the room is clear, the Willows Park Preserve had this wonderful moment where an anonymous donor came forward with 1.1 million, and that really helped.
Yeah, and the other part that's critical to understand is that the township's in an agreement with the Willows Park Preserve that identifies the then 1.8, now 1.6 million as the township's obligation to, in our, part of our agreement with the Willows Park Preserve. So as long as we have that agreement, the 1.6 million is tied up in that, in that agreement.
I can.
It was, yeah, in the fall of 2017, that's when that agreement was.
So are we presented, we received a grant and presented it to the township also in the fall of 2017. So I didn't live here then, but do you have any color as to why, you know, a project like that would get approved at that time period, but not 200 yards of sidewalk?
Sure. And it comes down to funding and prioritization, and that's why we're, we scheduled tonight's meeting as a special meeting. And I'll say it again when I go through the presentation part, it's just, it's an area of our long-term planning that usually gets talked about in the last, the last part of the budget, and then ultimately is not fulfilled, and it's something that the township struggled with for a long time. So hopefully tonight's the first step in trying to come up with something a little bit more concrete.
Yes, so there are, what, three pages? Three pages of capital, unfunded capital projects?
Yeah, it's probably four pages now.
Four pages now?
Yes.
So those, and, you know, the sidewalk, and Wayne Business Association, and all these things are on here. This board, which, when we voted on the 2019 budget, we represented a list of capital projects that, even with the tax increase, we were unable to fund. The sidewalk was one of those. And, you know, we knew, you know, as a board, that we have an issue. We have capital projects that need to be funded, and we can't always just put them off to the side. I think that's been happening for, you know, a number of years because of a reluctance, you know, a lack of funding. So tonight, let's figure out if we can find a way forward to fund things in the now, and also put forth a plan to fund things for the future. Because I agree with everyone who spoke to that and said that we need a plan moving forward. So that's why we're all here this evening, so. Thank you all so much for being here, for your comments. I don't know if anyone else has anything you want to say, this is a large group. In a close setting, is there anything?
I just have a question. Deanna Don, I live at 565 West Wayne Avenue, I'm also the vice president of the Wayne Business Association. So, do not take offense to this, but, you know, we met with all of you, and we talked about the funding that the WBA had been given over the course of, I guess, Chris, I mean, eight years, and it came to the point where like, okay, well, that can't be funded. Okay, well, we agree to this, but that can't be funded. How is it that that's not funded, that, you know, we get the 200, but then we're committed? Like, we get to the end of the year, and the WBA or some of these capital things are, but how is the Willows Park Reserve signed off in an agreement? Is it because we own the property as the township, or what's the, how come they're not kicked off when it's not a safety issue or a money maker for the township? So how is, how does that relate? If we get kicked off and they're still, like, we have this X amount of dollars? I mean, I know in the grand scheme of things, it's not a huge amount, but for all of us, it seems like a large amount.
So unfortunately, none of us are going to be able to answer that question for you, Will, because that was a decision that was made by a prior board. And I think that you were specifically pointing at the Willows, because they're the people who stood up in this room and said, we've already got $1.8 million of township money. The reality is, there are lots of projects and personnel decisions and lots of expenditures that prior boards have made that resulted in not funding either the WBA or the sidewalk project. That was prioritization that was made by a prior board, at least five of us weren't here at the time, probably seven of us weren't here at the time for some of the WBA issues. And we're just not going to be able to justify that to you or anybody in this room, because we don't know what was in the minds of those people. Tonight, we're going to have a conversation about what we do going forward, and I think that everybody has made themselves very clear. You definitely do not want a sidewalk, you want us to do nothing in it, right? That's what we get.
Yeah, I mean, I said, I think on multiple occasions, I wish I had a time machine, and maybe we would go back, but we can't, so all we're going to do is work with our staff, work with what we know are the needs, work with what we've got in front of us, which I guess is now four pages, and make a plan to move forward. So I hope that you all, you know, understand, believe that we're all here on a night to do nothing but talk about this. So I'm going to let Mr. White get started, unless there's something else.
Were we going to do the two resolutions?
Oh, we need to do the resolutions, yes, 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 all right. Is there any more public comment?
Lisa, I just want to say something really quickly.
Address?
221 Walnut Avenue. I'm in North Wayne, my name's Kristen Kearns, and I'm a real estate agent in the area, and I'm seeing the real estate in North and South Wayne directly impacted, like, something's going on. The allure of Wayne is kind of going wayside. I'm 100% supportive of the sidewalk. I mean, they're part of North Wayne, like, you should be able to, Gretchen Bond, I've been friends with her forever, our kids are friends, I would never let my kids walk up to her house, which is, what, five or six houses off of North Wayne, because there was no sidewalk, it was too dangerous. So I'm completely supportive of that, and as a real estate standpoint, when I have buyers, even though that side of Eagles, North Wayne, I get buyers who are like, don't, I don't want to see that side, there's just no sidewalks. So that directly impacts them, and it's over a sidewalk, but you know what, it's impacting them. And as, you know, I mean, Wayne is the hub of the township, it just is. And we walk a lot, I walk almost every day, and we walk through town, and always taking different routes. Now I'm seeing Maplewood has beautiful paved roads. There's roads outside of Wayne that I'm like, what are these roads, so gorgeous? But like, I'm parking my car, and I can't see the number to plug in, and I'm getting a ticket. And I'm the first one to run over here and fight it, because I'm like, I can't see the number. I'm completely supportive of what Chris said, like, let's fast pace, like, let's make it look pretty again. It's not pretty anymore, and there's so much other pretty things that we have to compete with. Let's make it look pretty, and include, like, the residents. I'm totally for, like, getting people together, and like, let's have the township make it look pretty, but then let's maintain it, like, include residents of the township, like, you take a block and you keep that, you make that look pretty. That's sponsored by, say, Christopher's or the Kearns family, or whatever. But somebody needs to be constantly maintaining this and make it pretty again. So I'd love to see our cute little town look pretty again. That's all I have to say. But again, I do see, I've never seen real estate so much on the market in North and South Wayne than we're seeing today. It's, everybody is talking about it. Nothing's moving, nothing's selling. The allure's gone. We need it back, so.
Are the capital allocations to the various public works projects included in the budget transparency website? I know there's like a lot of subsections, but it'd be great to see the actual allocations.
I was making a note, I'm sorry. My ears perked up whenever budget transparency, so I missed my post.
Budget, like, finance transparency, is there, can we see what you guys are actually planning to allocate to, so like, the Wayne Business Association, the Willows, is that accessible on there?
It's not in that program. What we have is our, is a capital listing included with the budget document. So if you go to the township's website under the Finance Department, you pull up Budgets, and you look at the 2019 budget, in there is the paperwork that Commissioner Browski referred to with all the projects listed. What is not in there is funding. So that's where we're supposed to get the conversation going tonight.
But those are projects that are being funded, we just don't know how much.
Those are projects that might get funded. We don't know which ones and how much.
So just to help, so we've got general capital category, which is facilities, parking lots, infrastructure, bridges, sidewalks, signals, parks, and tracts. So there's a lot of things, and other things.
Maybe what we try to do is, Bill's got a presentation he's going to do tonight, maybe we post that to the website, so you don't have to look for it, you'll be able to just go to this and see everything laid out.
All right. So first, we do have two pieces of business to get to, and then we will get into the conversation. Is there any more public comment? All right, thank you all very much for sharing your thoughts this evening. I'm going to...
Wait, Chris, Chris. I was just going to say, should we stay here and stare at you, or let you discuss this?
You're welcome to stare at us if you'd like, I mean, and to hear the conversation, you know, I think Bill has some thoughts, and we have some things to run through, so you're certainly more than welcome. It is being taped, so it will be broadcast again, if you guys, it's not live, but it will be broadcast.
Tomorrow, tomorrow.
So if you want to go home... So if you want to go home and then watch it tomorrow night while you're being hot born or something like that. Okay, can I get a motion to approve Resolution 2019-37, boarding contract B19001, the 2019 spring tree planting contract to All Seasons Landscaping in the amount of $38,500? Mr. Norrini?
Commissioner, this is the...
Go second.
Oh, thank you, thank you, sorry. Thank you. Now Mr. Norrini.
I'm sorry, Commissioner. So this is the spring tree planting bid. Residents sign up online, there's a $35 cost, and for that $35 cost, they get a tree worth several hundred dollars. Shade Tree Commission, we've bid it in two ways, bid it in two ways, and we're asking for the award of 70 trees to be planted by All Seasons Landscaping in the amount of $38,500 to be funded by the Shade Tree.
And that includes the tree and the planting?
That is supply, install, and water bag on the tree.
Very good. And these are for the, the street trees, correct?
Correct. So residents go online, sign up for it, they're planted within the right of what it is a township.
Is there any commissioner comment to the motion?
How much of this, you know, typically we get donations that support some of this activity. How much was, much of that was donated to share with Bill?
These are the, the big tree contributions?
Yeah, it's, it's in the spring. It gets shannon clear, I don't have that open talk.
Sorry, Commissioner, I'm going to have to look that up. I don't think you have a set amount every year.
Well, Shannon Clear donates, yeah, it's a fixed amount in roughly 15,000 to 18,000 is the amount. If we're talking about the big tree, that's different.
Additional.
Well, the big trees where the, the folks who get a tree, they, they contribute a small amount.
So that's usually done in the fall. This is the first time they're doing it in the spring. That's why it's called, it's a state program, but it's called the Shade Tree Planting Program. So there is a balance in the Shade Tree Fund to be able to fund this, aside from the Shannon Clear donation.
Any other commissioner comment? Any staff comment? Is there any public comment to the motion on the floor? All those in favor of Resolution 29, 2019-37, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes six to nothing, Commissioner Clark absent. Resolution 2019-38, authorizing the purchase of rain gear boots for the Public Works Department employees. Can I get a motion to approve?
Second.
All right.
Madam President, so this is for the Public Works Department. This is a budgeted item. This is for rain gear for our folks that work outside in all weather conditions, snow, rain, sleet, or trash recycling, parks that working on the streets. And it's a budgeted item, they are also safety, these are also high visibility safety gear. So they serve two purposes.
Any commissioner comment? Any staff?
Is this every year we've done this, or? We've never asked them to buy that stuff, right?
No. We don't do it every year, though, because then...
Yeah, because it lasts, all right.
Yeah, right. So we're getting this from Flaco's in Concha Hockland?
Yes.
How, did you shop this? Just curious, I mean, Flaco's...
Flaco's is actually very competitive, believe it or not. A lot of townships in the area go to them.
I, I know them from growing up, but it's, and I think it's great that you're going to a mom and pop, but at the same time...
So I know my colleague always does shop things, and they say they, they are very competitive when it comes to this. They sold to a lot of townships, so it's not tough.
Any other commissioner comment? Staff comment? Any public comment? All those in favor of Resolution 2019-38, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes six to nothing with Commissioner Clark absent. All right, discussion of capital funding, the main events. Mr. White?
All right. Well, first of all, we'll start off by thanking the board for having the meeting. As we've kind of tiptoed around with some of the public comment and discussion, it's, it's been a long time coming. What, what I'm hoping to do tonight is, the presentation portion of this is to kind of set the table, and then we can dive into the, the spreadsheets and talk, talk numbers and concepts. But I think it's important, especially given the conversation we had tonight, just what the board faces in terms of making these decisions and how we've, we've gotten to where we're at tonight. So in the last couple of months since this meeting was scheduled, I've spent a lot of time researching through the, the various best practice, government best practice sites with the ICMA and GFOA. GFOA is the Government Finance Officers, so they're, they're the leaders in terms of accumulating policies that work and, you know, highly effective government operations where these things are working. So that, it's a great resource to go to when we have questions like this because a lot of what we're grappling with, it's not new or it's not unique to us. In a lot of cases and various pieces and parts, other entities have already put it together. So in, in GFOA is very clear that in order to develop an effective long-term capital plan, it has to start with strategic goals that are more, are strategic goals that are then further defined into objectives and initiatives. And examples might include, and it, it's relevant given the conversations we had tonight, that a strategic goal might be to enhance community safety, something as broad based as that. And then you get into an objective being increase or review strategies for pedestrian safety. And then the initiatives are, you know, look at sidewalk, adding sidewalks in various towns where it's needed. And so when you, when you do that and you couple that with maybe economic viability, where, you know, the reinvestment into Wayne is prioritized, financial sustainability, community health, you know, the, the real broad strategic things that the board has to, to balance all, balance everything against. When you start narrowing those down, you can get into specific projects. And then the debt, adopting a, a sound debt policy and capital policy gives the board and future boards the framework to work within in developing the long-term capital plan. And what, where Radnor's come up short through the years is that we've always started with the capital plan. We've always just identified projects and tried to bundle it all together and figure out how we're going to fund it. And, and we have, we have figured, figured out that it doesn't work very well that way. It works great when revenues are good and we've got extra money to throw at capital, but like the last two years have shown us in previous cycles where revenues for the township have backed up a little bit, the way, the way that we have been doing it is not sustainable. So as a, a little bit of context for the residents who may not know and the newer commissioners and, some of this information was pulled out of the Carfac report from 2017. I've updated it with the most recent bullet point, but 1990 through 2008, we went as far back as 1990 because our debt records went back that far and they were very clear and they were easy to follow, and we can say with a lot of confidence that for that, that span of time, roughly 28 years, the township utilized periodic debt financing to fund its capital plan. Every few years, the township would go out and borrow 7, 10, 12 million dollars. They'd have projects identified and they would spend that money down, and when that money was exhausted, they'd go out and borrow more. And that, that was the plan up until 2008. If everyone remembers, in 2008, there were a number of things happening globally, in the nation and specific to Radnor, all of which impacted how the township decided to move forward with its capital plan. The, the bigger factors that we could identify were the township had borrowed 30 million in new money in a very short period of time from 2004 to '07, which caused obviously the debt, the outstanding debt number to, to jump considerably with not a lot of time for repayment. So the impact of the operating side of our budget was that the debt, annual debt service jumped way up. At the same time, there was an economic downturn and the, the business taxes that are critical to the general fund decreased by millions. So it was a double, a double whammy in terms of a, a growing debt service expense and reduced revenues to pay for it with. And because the program was borrow, spend it down, borrow, spend it down, there were no capital set-asides. There was no reserves to, to go to, to buy time until revenues improved or another funding source could be identified. So from 2008 to '11, there was virtually no capital improvements in the town. There was a, a major pause going on with issuing any kind of new debt. There was the CBFAC report, for those that, that have been around long enough to remember that, where I've gone back and done some research on the township and they were, that group was pretty critical, the, the amount of debt that the township was carrying. So issuing new debt was not really viable at the time. Then from 12, 2012 to '16, the township experienced really significant business tax growth, which allowed us to kind of bridge, bridge the gap between then and now and, and pay for some capital expenses over a period of time. There's, there's actually two exceptions, and I forgot the one exception when I was putting this bullet list together, but in 2012, the township did borrow just shy of 10 million for the purchase of our drossen. That's voted open space, the millage of which was never adopted. We've been using the park or the real estate transfer taxes to pay for that. But then the other exception was in 2015, the board voted to borrow money for the library improvement project, some park improvements and some trail improvements, and at the same time, voted to increase the millage rate specifically to pay for that debt. But the difference between that borrowing and the ones the township was doing the decades prior was that the one in '15 was very focused and, and project-specific. And then for the last two years and especially this year, there have, the revenues have not been there to support the large cash transfers needed to put into the capital fund to fund the program. So we've had a growing list of projects. The, the sidewalk is an excellent example of one that's been with us for a couple of years. There's a whole handful of them in the, the budget document of projects that have been on the list, they just haven't been funded. So what, what this board now has is a list of projects that include a lot of backlog as well as a lot of asset, current assets being replaced as part of a, a schedule, and then new projects or enhancements going forward.
Bill, could you just quickly define the pay as you go and the pay as you use? Because the stuff that we're talking about as the backlog are more as a pay as you, you use, correct?
Yeah.
And it took me a while to figure that all out when I first started working with the budget, so could you explain that?
I'll step through the next couple of slides where we talk about that.
Okay.
If I haven't done a good enough job, I'll, I'll circle back and, and reemphasize.
All right, thank you.
What is working? So there are two components to the capital program that have been developed over the last eight years that, that have been working. The most recent of which is a road resurfacing program. There's, there's always going to be roads that need to be paved. There's no amount of money possible out there for the township to address all of them at once. But based on engineering numbers and forecasted amounts of the cost of the resurfacing and the number of roads or lane miles that we have in the township that are township-owned, that, that's an important caveat here because we do have a large number of state-owned roads that Pendot is on the hook to repave based on their own schedule. But the board at the time elected to approve a recommendation from Carfac that, that allowed for an investment of a million dollars per year into the township-owned roads, and what that would allow for is a, a 12-year cycle where we should get through all the lane miles in the town. Obviously, that amount is going to have to grow over time with inflationary costs. The township receives roughly 800,000 or has, we get 900,000 from state liquid fuels, we use 100,000 of that for salt as part of our de-icing program for the winter. The remaining amount coupled with roughly 200,000 from general fund money is our $1 million road project. So if the township sticks with that for the, going forward, we'll be on a 12-year cycle where we get through all the township roads. The other part of that program is, is over the last couple of years, we've worked, tried to work more closely with Pendot, or not, not Pendot, but the, the utility companies, Pico and Aqua, as they get into the roads, where we try to time up resurfacing the township's side versus the side that they're responsible for. That's always an ongoing negotiation depending on how those improvements go. But that's another way where we get half of our roads repaved on, on their dollar instead of the township's. The other component of this that, that the township has been doing a pretty good job with was the pay as you go. So we'll refer to the capital plan in two broad categories. There's the pay as you go, which is our shorter-term capital assets, the ones that have a, a three, five, maybe seven-year life where it doesn't make sense to borrow long-term dollars to pay for. So we use cash, we use current resources to pay for that, or today's tax dollars will transfer into the capital fund. And what we're doing with that is we're buying our fleet replacement, so that's part of a regular schedule based on the useful life of the vehicles and how much they're used. And then also departmental equipment, which is the same. The only difference is departmental equipment are the, the leaf vacuums in Public Works, the, the large lawnmowers used, you know, the, the larger movable equipment, the back hose, the, you know, the, the big pieces of equipment. So, and that's roughly 1.5 million dollars per year, and that's been funded regularly for the past, well, going back to about 2012 or '13. So those are the two components that have worked and are working well now. What's missing in, is we still lack board-level strategic goals, objectives, or initiatives that help identify which project should be moved to the top of the list or which ones should be funded over time. We don't have the formal debt or capital policy that helps make the decision-making based on financial sustainability. And what ends up happening is we've depleted our capital reserves, again, because we haven't had the revenues to replenish those. The ad hoc project development has been guided more by squeaky wheels or, or those who grab an ear versus any kind of broader goal or initiative that the board as a group wants to see get done. There's no, no project evaluation or prioritization. And again, this is being discussed tonight, but these are issues that have been with the township for as long as we've been here and even going back, because it was basically a, a pay as you go capital plan then, they were just using debt money to do it. Emergency base, basis borrowing, as we experienced at the end of last year, the sanitary sewer fund. And then where we're at with 2019 is we have, again, we've got a backlog of projects, we've got new projects that have come up in the first quarter of this year. They've all got their merits, they, you know, there's a need, but there's no capital funding and no plan to follow, which would help guide those projects from concept to plan to install. Right now, it's, it's, it's kind of hack, you know, buckshot, shotgun type of, well, this one sounds good and this one's not too much, so we're going to fit that one in. Well, this one's too much, so unfortunately, it, it doesn't get funded when maybe a different prioritization would allow those to go forward. The other issues in terms of financial sustainability, again, there's no dedicated funding source. We have the 1.5 that comes out of the operating budget for the fleet, equipment and fleet, or the departmental fleet and equipment, but it's not, it's not dedicated. If, if revenues are to back up on us significantly again, as the third bullet point, we're, we're having capital dollars compete with operational dollars. So the question will become, you know, what do we fund first? And operations will win that argument every time because that's what the township needs to, that's, that's going to win. We're not going to see, stop operations to put in a significant capital project. So what ends up happening is, is capital gets undervalued or shoved to the back of the line. And that's, that's just kind of what's happened here. So a couple of the questions is, are we willing to identify and carve out... So a couple of the questions is, are we willing to identify and carve out specific amounts of our millage and make it capital specific? It could come out of our current millage rate, we're paying for it already. It could be added to in increments over time if there are other priorities that need to be funded by the board. You know, with our series of meetings this year, obviously, you know, we talked about fire. We've got a couple of other ones later this year that there's, people could be asking for money. So how does capital fit in with all of that? And then as of, as of now, there's no commitment to prioritize the timely replacement, replacement of existing township assets. So, and this falls back on us as, as well, for sure. We don't do a good enough job of reporting. I mean, how many people know that we have $75 million in assets reported on our books? It's, it's not something we spend a lot of time with and discussing. And we don't talk about any kind of regular scheduled maintenance or replacement of those items. So a good capital policy and plan would include not just setting the money aside, but identifying what those assets are so the public knows. And, and everybody can count on their road being resurfaced or whatever park they enjoy getting the tired equipment replaced or the broken equipment replaced and so on. And then there's no program for adding or evaluating the new projects or the enhancements. And what's happened over the years is, excuse me, if you wouldn't mind, yeah. Is that as projects pop up, he's all choked up talking about capital. Is projects just show up and with the commissioner might have someone on the line?
Do you want some of mine?
No, it's all right.
You don't have cooties.
You gotta hydrate before that's right back.
So what's happened is, is we've had very, projects that are specific commissioners, sponsored or prioritized and, or the administration has tried to balance that amongst the different commissioners. And sometimes it works because the project just makes that much sense. But sometimes there's projects that one commissioner likes that obviously others may not. And again, without a plan and a commissioner approved way to evaluate and prioritize those projects, either the projects fall apart entirely or it becomes a political issue. And that's not always the best way to fund this program. And then again, there's projects that, thank you very much, that are discussed informally, maybe at a board meeting, maybe in a sidebar conversation, either in a township building or if you're having a discussion with a constituent. There's, as of now, there's no formal way to make that into a project that the entire board considers and adds to the list for some sort of future evaluation and inclusion in a plan. So there's a very high likelihood that that project may, may just disappear. And then inevitably it comes back up in a couple of months where people are like, hey, weren't we talking about doing this or that? And there's no, there's no way to keep track of it. So to move forward, what, what, what's being recommended is that the board consider or reconsider adopting those strategic goals, objectives and initiatives that help set the table for what you guys as a board feel are the areas that we should be investing money into. At the same time, we can draft a debt policy. As I mentioned, we don't have to invent this, there's, there's a lot of good debt policies out there. I've already started working on incorporating the best practices and blending in our Radnor specific elements. And then adopt a capital policy that formalizes the process by which capital projects are developed and make it onto a list. And then formalizes the process by which the board evaluates or prioritizes and funds them. And that could be, you know, obviously the formal, the pro, the process of identifying new projects to be included on the list is ongoing. And, and just about anyone can, can suggest a project, put it in front of the board for inclusion. That's not the board saying, yes, we're going to fund it. It's the board saying, yes, we recognize it as a project added to the list. And then maybe in September of every year, the board sits down with that list as part of the larger strategic goals, objectives, initiatives and within the framework of the, the two policies. And projects are prioritized and then we know how much needs to be funded. And that's really what the last bullet point is, is it's adopting the, the capital plan that marries all of those elements together. And it, it's important, important components is that one of the primary goals is that it's sustainable. It, the plan spans beyond the current board. And really what you would be doing is setting yourselves up in future boards so that they're not having the same kind of meeting in years to come. But instead they're having a meeting where here's all of our projects, here's our policy. You know, do the, are, are we funding these or do these need to be reprioritized? Do things need to be moved around? And that happens annually as part of the budget process anyway. So that's what, that's what we're recommending. And it's very easy to put these bullet points on a spreadsheet or on a presentation and talk about them. It's going to be a lot harder to, to get the entire board on, on the same page with regard to getting it in motion and acting on it. But it's, this is, when you look at governments that have figured this out and that are, have well-funded and efficient running capital project or programs, this is the way they're done. That's the common thing. It points back to the broader goals. The projects fall within those goals and that's what elevates them in priority is they get scored higher because they're meeting multiple strategic goals. If they've got outside funding, be it a grant or a public-private partnership or some other way that gets a project funded, then the board consider those, considers those on a case-by-case basis. And that might elevate a project to the top of the list. But it, it makes the plan sustainable, but it gives the board, the board a roadmap for getting these projects done. So that when you're talking with your constituents or there are projects that we're talking about administratively with the board, we all know what needs to happen next in order to get that project identified and funded. And it was, it's been talked about with a couple of very specific projects tonight that they've been going on for years. And I think part of the problem is, is that we don't have a plan that tells us what to do next. And that's what, that's what we'd be looking to build is what to do next with that. And then ultimately what, where we're going to get to is, well, how do we want to fund it? Do we want to, what, what's the board's appetite for pay as you go versus, versus debt financing or more realistically probably some combination of both? But there's, there's one part, one part of this that I hope everyone agrees with and I'd be curious to get your reaction to is, is, is it generally accepted that the list and the dollar amount of all the known projects is going to be greater than anything that we're able to fund?
Bill?
Okay.
Let me just say this. So what I find extremely problematic is that there are three pages and now four pages. So I think the first thing that we should do, and I don't know how you do it, is clean all that up because some of them may be out of date, they may not be relevant. You may be able to get grants and they all need to be prioritized.
Prioritize based on what?
That's, that's, that's a great question, but there may be one page or 30 things that just aren't relevant anymore. I, I, I don't know, I mean, I don't have it in front of me.
Wait, I got it right here.
Thank you, Lisa.
I got it right here tonight, we can go.
Yeah, no, and, and that's it. I don't, and I don't know if it's necessarily going to be the best use of our time, but maybe we can look at these and say what are, and prioritize them individually, talk to our constituents to do that. That to me is, you know, the, the most, that's the, the most compelling thing that you've, that you've said tonight. To me, you didn't mention that the township does not have goals. We're having 10 meetings because of the whole goal-setting thing. We've had, we're going to have 10 meetings this year based on stuff like this. If it's actual planning or fire or sewer or library or police and that, I think this is, these are our goals. It's just not done in the format that, you know, you would have liked. But the big thing, as you said, it comes down to one thing, it comes down to dollars. So it's great to talk about, you know, are we, how are we going to get this money? The $64,000 question or maybe $2 billion question is how our mercantile taxes so far this year. And there are a lot of things, you know, there are a lot of dollars that we may or may not know how they're coming in so, so far. So the other question I have, and I'm sure it's part of your presentation, is how our mercantile tax is stacking up to where they were last year? Because as you know and everyone knows, that was the biggest shortstop.
Well, I'll, I'll address the last point first and, and honestly, that's not part of the presentation tonight because that's part of the problem that we get ourselves into is we base capital decisions on how we're do, how our taxes doing right now. And that's what gets us in this trick bag where projects, we think we have funding and then we get to May 15th and the revenues didn't pan out. And then all of a sudden something's getting funded or we're having to reevaluate. A, a good plan, a good program that's well-funded, you don't have that, you're not relying on those annual revenues to, once the board adopts the plan for that year, then that year you're executing. And then your discussions during that year are talking about, you know, what you're going to do over the next five, six, seven years, however long you want to forecast this out.
And I just think, just to add to Bill's point, you saw the first slide that talked about board goals and then follows the flow chart is by going through and jumping right away to the different capital projects, now all of a sudden you flip that to where we've been at is, in the capital plan is not having those goals. Because if you had those goals and objectives set up first, all these meetings, then you'd be able to fit within those as we go through each one.
True, but you never know, you know, when you look at where we fell short in our budget last year, you can argue depending on how you look at the numbers, is it 4 million, is it 2 million? Depending on, you know, what numbers you want to pull from and then how you kind of reconcile that to even. So the big thing that I see, and it's a big amount, 2 million out of what's our total budget, about 45 million?
35 is probably closer because that's general fund.
That's a large percent, that mark of that short form mercantile tax was a large percent of our budget.
So you said no.
So it looked to me like we had about $9 million worth of capital projects allocated over six years. I know that it's going off because it's the fourth page.
Well, yeah, just don't hold me to four pages. I was just inferring that there are now more projects than there were last fall when we were having this discussion, so.
So $9 million over six years is what, like 1. some odd million dollars per year that we would have to allocate and our total budget's about 35 million. Now the reality, I know I'm saying 1. some odd million and I'm just casually adding or averaging, but your numbers indicate that we're going to have years where we need actually more than 3 million and years where we actually need more than 2 million. So we can't just say we need an extra billion dollars a year.
You said there's nine total, 9 million total for five years?
I started by asking that because when I looked at the numbers on page, I think it's like 123 of the 2009 budget, it looked to me like I was roughly adding to my head. So yeah, it's, where am I for the total project for the capital project? 131. So what's the total over six years?
You had a different spreadsheet that you showed us before, it's not this one.
Yeah, yeah, so we, let's, let's work off this one. It's, it's the same list, this should look familiar, this is what's the detail, this is the detail that's included in the budget?
That's what I was trying to add up.
Well, except we've added a lot more projects that have come up this year.
Oh, yeah.
Great. And if I could note, when Mr. White had the, the budget capital sheet up, just that one snapshot showed resurfacing the parking lots of the WBOD. So that's been on the capital plan for several years. It's just a matter of whether it's been pushed back or funded. And at one point we went through and our capital budget included every traffic signal. So we've tried different ways to package this as far as from a planning standpoint, signal by signal, sidewalk by sidewalk, set amounts for them. But we have, I think there is four sidewalk projects in there. There's the North Wayne from Woodsworth Court to Eagles. There's the Poplar, the Poplar Station North Wayne pedestrian project. There's two others listed in there and I think that's where the, I don't want to speak for Mr. White, but that's where the, the goal-setting starts. Do we wish to move forward with pedestrian safety product, projects or pedestrian projects? And in what fashion? Because we have the projects. Do we wish to wish, move forward with traffic mitigation projects? So we have many, many projects that Mr. White's going to show you. We need guidance in how you wish us to try to move forward. But I think the Commissioner Farby's statement, I don't think there's any old projects on there that need to be cleaned up. They're all valid and relatively new. It's not new, but they're all valid. They may have been on the capital plan for some time, but they're in need of being done. I use the lane parking, that's been on the radar for a long time because that's a good funding.
Yeah, so you, these numbers are different from the ones I was looking at a second ago and this is probably my error.
It looks like we're talking about not about a million and some odd dollars a year in capital funding. We're looking at about 6.7, 6.8 million dollars per year in capital.
Yeah, so these are the averages over the, the time span shown.
So if we're looking at, call it 7 million dollars on a 35 million dollar budget, that would be a significant amount of additional money that we had to find, but it's, it would not be doubling our budget. The question that we as a board have to decide is, are we going to, it sounds like from what you're saying, are we going to abandon some of these projects as projects that are not worthy for us to do? Or are we going to find the money somewhere else?
Yeah, after working with the list for a couple of months, I'm not, I guess it's probably not, it's not my, my place to say abandon any of them, but just prioritize and, and decide which ones get funded and when. And if you decide as a board to abandon them, then so be it. But what, what we've got included here are projects that, that we're aware of, either through years of accumulating them or in conversations with different board members. And this is just where it's at now.
What you're saying makes sense, but I want to stress from, first off, our perspectives, there are some of us who are not going to be back next year, there are some of us who will not be back five years from now, whatever it is. So if there's a project that we're pushing off for six years or something, it is abandoned from that perspective. And from the perspective of the people who are in homes, they could be out of Radnor by then. So the sidewalk, just because we've heard so much about it, if it takes another five years, 10 years for us to get around to it, we will have lost the grant money, which would be sad, but it would also mean that there are people who have kids who are no longer walking to school, they're in college or they've gotten homes of their own. There are people who've moved out, that kind of thing. You guys have longevity that we do not. So from your perspective, it doesn't feel like abandoning it, from a lot of people's perspective it does. Which is, I know it's kind of semantic, but I thought it was a point that was worth raising. Which goes back to my question though, you're saying we can either cut projects and defer them or we can find additional money?
No, 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 I, I, no, I, I apologize if I asked my question wrong. My, what, what I was trying to gauge is, maybe, let me try to find a different way to word it, is that the board's appetite for generating revenue and then having to pay for it, whether it be debt or taxes, the, the, the dollar amount in project is going to most likely be greater than what the appetite is for increased either debt or, or taxes. I'm just, I'm, I'm asking or I'm trying to figure out, we've got, so I highlighted 2020 through 2024 and that's probably not the right one, let's just look at our pay as you use portion, which I should circle back to that, Lisa. which, I should circle back to that, Lisa. And the sum of all those projects is 30 million, in a five-year window. I'm guessing that we're not gonna be able to generate 30 million in five years to fund those, so there's gonna have to be some level of prioritization on those projects to fit with, fit within whatever amounts that you as a board are willing to fund. That's what I was, I was trying to gauge.
When you say prioritization, how is that different from, I'm genuinely not trying to be adversarial, because I think, if you're saying what I think you're saying, I agree with you, it's just a math problem, basically. How is prioritization different from saying, we're going to pick the most worthy projects that we can afford, and then the rest of them, we are going to abandon with the hopes of coming back to them in a year when we have the money?
Can I jump in on that? So, I've done capital planning for a long time, so when we did the capital plan for the vehicles, we had to go out 15 years, because I had to show Mr. White how all these things were gonna work. But once it's on, obviously, year one is set in stone, once the board, if it approves it. Year two is very close, but years three, four, five, through 10, that's where things can move around. And although you may not be physically able to fund everything, at least you're showing the project is visible, it's out there. I understand what you're saying, three years might be millennia for somebody whose kids are in middle school, but the project is still there, so that gives it two things. It may be funded in three years or five years, and also depending on finances go, those projects can slide. So, some that are slated for 2025 can come into 2020, and vice versa. So, from a capital planning standpoint, you still need, my recommendation is, you still need to show them.
But if you, as a board, since public health, safety, welfare of the community, public say, that will be what we will prioritize as, what's then, what we wanna fund first, and then it goes to enhancements, what enhancements in the township policy? Or, how, what do we do to maintain the assets that we have, maintain and replace? So, those would be those priorities that the board would try to figure out, how you stack those, how you wanna go ahead and fund that. Or you take percentages, say so much for a percentage of our capital plan annually will be public health, safety, welfare, the next are enhancements. Third would be, how do we have to maintain our assets that we have? So, I think those were, I think those would, I think they'd be like buckets, you'd actually say, this is what, and then those are the priorities the board selects, one, two, three, or four, five, whatever you have. Infrastructure would be another one.
So, if we're kind of starting, though, at ground zero, I guess with all of these things here, that haven't been funded, that have been proposed, that have been kind of pushed off, do we first need to, maybe a little bit to what Sean was saying, come up with maybe an initial set of priorities in order to kind of clean some of these off? So, would one of the first things be anything that has a matching grant to it? And I know two projects, there may be more, I don't know, that were on our list for the last, when we were considering the budget for 2019. So, one was the sidewalk, and the other was the intersection at Pine Tree and Spruce Tree, or at Pine Tree and Mango Pressure.
Yeah, yeah. Well, there's more, there's more examples, there's the pedestrian bridge, where it's not a grant, but we're cost-sharing that project with the schools.
So, that's what I was gonna say, are there other things that are costing?
For trail projects, and those kind of things.
That need to get done, because others are going to be either contributing, there's some sort of agreement that we have to do it. So, is it, you know, the first level of priority, pulling off things like that and putting those into a bucket? Because we certainly don't wanna lose grant money, that does, I think, impact our ability to go out for future grants, and we know we wanna do that for other projects. So, you know, we don't wanna get a bad rap, not using grant money.
But as our resident said, there's value, so you're getting, you're paying 60% of a project cost, so there's great value, the fact that we have grants for these things, where our rate of return is much better.
So, then we just need to kind of figure out?
Well, I would just take issue with that. I don't always agree with that, because plenty of grant, plenty of projects, we applied for a grant, where it was, well, we'll just throw a grant in, and if we get it, maybe we'll do it. It's by no means important just because there's a grant. Those all have to be measured on their own priority level.
Like the first argument, it just sends you to the dollar, in that you're paying what?
And I would hope we aren't just doing projects just for the heck of it, and going out and finding a grant for the heck of it, that they are projects that have been identified as being needed.
Throw in plenty of grants.
And to the, and to the, either the non-desire, or not, I would not say the non-desire, but to the fact that it wasn't a priority to set goals around how we decide what projects we're doing. We have a lot, we have a lot of projects, and I'm gonna guess that those projects are needed and worthy projects, am I right? These aren't just projects that somebody said, hey, let's do a traffic signal here, and is that a question I have?
Yes, yes, all the projects were born out of some sort of need by somebody or someone at some point.
And if we got a grant, then to me, that is also somebody else agreeing that, yes, it's a worthy project, because you don't just call the state and say, hey, we want a grant, they say, oh, great, we'll give it to you. You have to justify, right, that project, and somebody else has to agree that it's worthy.
I mean, isn't the other, well, yeah, I don't wanna get too far into detail of grants, but, I mean, the other way, that once we get this program up and running, and it's gonna take some time, but it's where we have projects identified, maybe in a year or two, and then we go get grants for them. They're already in the plan, they were theoretically already going to be funded, because they're in the plan. So, let's, to Commissioner Booker's point, let's, let's go get a grant for a project that the board has already said yes, we're gonna do in a couple of years, so why not go get a grant for that one? So, it's, that way you know that when you're applying for the grant, that there is board support for it.
Like the trails.
Yeah.
The trails could be a great example of that, right?
Yeah, that's complicated, but yeah.
All right, because I feel like we need somewhere where we have to start, and I don't know how anyone else feels, I think that we should develop some sort of mechanism for identifying, or for evaluating projects, and prioritizing. But given that we've got so many, that, you know, I feel like, in a way, it would be a disservice to some of these to just say, to wait, again, continue to wait, and find, while we define whatever the process would be, when we do have some that are, you know, if they're worthy projects, and we have grants that are gonna support them, and other people that are willing to help us pay for them.
Sure, and you have to look at the time factor as well, so they don't, and those, maybe tied with safety, because that seemed to be the interest tonight, those would be the ones that would be higher on the list, especially if you're running, you know, if you're under the gun when it comes to time. That's how I would.
Commissioner Farkey's point, I think with Bill flash on this stuff, I think there's five pedestrian safety, pedestrian safety projects on the list. I don't even know if the board realizes that. So, those projects come from you to us, so in essence, from a staff standpoint, I'm saying, I think the board is prioritizing pedestrian safety. I don't know that you are, but that's why you need to go through that and say, yes, this is a priority. We do have quite a few projects like that on there.
I think that the safety of our residents is probably the most, and our staff.
I mean, some that have grants, some that didn't get grants, but are still on the list because they're considered a valid project, and we can still go for grants.
All right, may I make comment? My vote, priority projects need to be, one, the projects that have already been approved by this board, with or without a grant. If there's already approved, those are going to have to be the priority, and you can prioritize those with health, safety, whatever, and those that are, or there's another commitment. So, those are number one. Number two would be projects that are in this infrastructure type of items. Then, three would be the nice, nice projects. But projects that have been approved should be first, and also projects that are necessary for health, safety, and welfare, and I'm thinking the sewers, right? Sewer project, the sewer needs to be funded, repairs for the sewer system need to be a priority, because that's a health and safety issue.
Isn't that, that's separate from this, though? The sewers is a whole nother.
Yeah, that's separate from these numbers. That's next month.
Haven't we approved all the projects that were on the list? Just why they're on the budget, right?
No.
Well, so that, that's a disconnect, and it's, I'm glad you brought that up. Ideally, the answer to that question would be yes, but in our budget cycles for the last few years, we've never gotten that far.
No, because it's a five-year plan, we haven't approved projects that are two or three years out. What I'm referring to is projects that were approved in 2018 to proceed, which have not been funded. Those have to be number one.
Well, we shouldn't have, though, on the five-year plan, there should be projects that the board says, yes, we agree, it's just, these are on those, those years out of how we fund these.
Well, that's part of your job, as, you know, you're laying them out, and when they come up, we can approve them, you know, but we don't need to approve, I guess if you want us to approve everything five years out, to me, I would say, that's kind of too far.
Well, we know it's fluid, it's gonna change as it goes, because things will come up, but at least there's a plan that you can.
But, you know, we can do that, we can make that change, but what I'm talking about right now is, things that we approved in 2018, they need to be up top.
But what about things we approved in 20, were approved in 2017?
I think we should put everything on the table again, and prioritize it, what is previously been approved or not.
This goes to a fundamental disconnect, I think, between what the residents' expectations, and some expect my expectations are, and how we as a board and a township treat things. I view all the items that we have approved on our budget as having been approved. The fact that we have a board, as a board, have not specifically said, yeah, it's okay, we're going to go ahead with paying for the study, and we're not gonna give you specific dollars yet to pay for the whatever else. There are residents, I'm just gonna keep going back to the sidewalk, because it's top of mind, they are all under the impression that the sidewalk has already been approved, because Jim Higgins told them, it's been budgeted for it, it's in the budget, you get your sidewalk now.
Similar to the trees for the W B A.
Similar to the trees for the W B A. The W B A has spoken individually with every single one of us, and they're under the impression that we as a board have approved that, because we budgeted it every year for the last zillion years.
Well, no, we approved the project, we didn't budget the funds, and we didn't sign a contract.
It's in the budget. We have not appropriated dollars for it, we have not yet done it.
But that's, that's what we need to do, is appropriate dollars, until we appropriate dollars, it's not approved.
I agree with you. I, I, I mean, on the one hand, I agree with you that we have not budgeted the dollars.
But then that's the same thing for all the projects we approved.
Well, no, because we've written contracts, and you're right, 2017, if we've written a contract for a project 2017, haven't funded it, we better fund it. And we have, we have projects we approved in 2015 that still are on that list. So, we need to get them done.
But you're saying that the key component of having a project be quote-unquote approved is we have to have.
We have a contract, with a contract, which we approved the amount, and we committed to pay somebody. Those have to be number one, versus those that are on a list, which we approved the five-year plan, that's, until we appropriate the funds, that's, that's not gonna rise to the same level of priority.
But approved is not a term of art, it doesn't have specific meaning, and there are a lot of residents who are under the impression, and frankly, I am too, if we budget a project, it has been approved. The board has indicated an intent to move forward with the project.
If the budget is approved by the board, and that project is in that budget, then it's approved.
All projects are subject to the final approval and appropriation of funds, until such time, they are not on the, on the public dole.
I guarantee you, everybody understands that the board will make the final decision. People who have not gotten their sidewalk, the W B A who has not gotten their trees, everybody who has not had a project done on this list, knows that we will be the people who are responsible for that failure. But it's not crazy of them to expect and hold us accountable for following through with the projects that we have budgeted for, and we just heard that all of these projects are worthy projects that we should impact.
Well, again, we have, we have grant, in this case, the sidewalk, we have a grant application that Jim wanted, and I believe I voted against it, I don't, just because we filed a grant application, doesn't mean that we're going to put that money aside for that project, even if the grant is, even if the grant is granted. So, there's plenty of projects, where we file an application, which we know is subject to final approval, and it's not an approved project. All we approved was a grant application.
But then it got into the budget.
Also, not for nothing, I think that when we apply for the grants, we do make representations that we intend to go through with the project.
Kind of a waste if you.
No, it's, we represent that we will pay if we go forward, we will pay our share, that's all.
So, I feel like this, you know, we can go round and round on this, and that's not gonna get us any.
But it's, no, it's an important point, because this is, government does this, we have a plan of projects, they are not finally approved, and they're not obligations of the taxpayers, until such time as the monies are appropriated and a contract is let.
Nobody disagrees with you.
Yeah, we don't disagree on that. We don't have the money, so we need to figure out a plan to have the money. I mean, we can approve projects, we did. I approved projects last year, and I was like, oh, great, and then they ended up on the list, and they're not there. Matt and Fort Bridge.
That's at Fort Bridge, it needs to rise in the tide, because we've signed contracts.
So, but that's just an example of us approving projects, and we really didn't allocate the funds. So, I think, again, we can go round and round on this, it's not gonna move us forward, so we need to figure out what we can do to move us forward.
Can I ask Bill a question? Bill? So, do you look at some of these projects, and, for instance, very similar to like a police car? The average life is five years, and we have to have it get, then it gets replaced. I know that you repaved Rockingham, and, well, I'm very happy that my road was repaved, I gotta be honest with you, I don't necessarily know that it needed it, so.
Well, take that money back.
No. But, no, 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 let me, so, so, hold on, let me finish.
We just pick willy-nilly.
Yeah, no, so let me, before I lose my train of thought, so I think you said that you had roads slated every 12 years, is that correct? On average, they would need to get repaved in the township.
Well, the, the life of the material getting put down is roughly 12 years.
So, sometimes you, maybe some may need an eight?
Yeah, the higher used roads will be shorter, the more used roads will be longer.
And some you could extend it to 15. So, you could say on average it's 12, and then you'd have to look at those. Is that kind of what you're basically, I don't wanna say amortizing, but really depreciating, so to, so to speak? You know, take the parks, for instance, the playgrounds and the jungle gyms are gonna last eight years, and then there's gonna be a new law that, you know, you can't have a merry-go-round, kids fly off, and you have to replace it. So, so that's kind of what your goal is, and that would give you a better idea on how to budget for this?
That's, I think that's a significant component of a well-organized plan, but that's only gonna be part of it.
And that's a concept, Bill, because we don't, we, but, hold on, just make the point, we are not setting aside a sinking fund, we, we do, so when you're talking about your seven years of amortization or depreciation, it's not like there's money going into account that's gonna be there to replace that.
No, but you know, you know what's coming up in five, you know, maybe five years or seven, I'm sorry, let me.
Yeah, so, that, you're both right. It's a situation where the board, on an annual basis, is going through and identifying what's gonna be funded. But making that decision from what's gonna be funded, it comes off of a plan that already exists, it's not something that we're starting from scratch on year over year. And that way, we know, and we can forecast and predict what resources are gonna be needed in future years, approximate, the board's not buying bonds, or issuing bonds in 2022, but you're saying, all right, we're gonna need, whatever the number is, 5 million in 2022 for a list of these projects. Knowing that that's gonna change, those projects may move around, but we could count on needing about 5 million to do it. And again, I'm making that number up, just to prove the point. But, the, the more important issue I wanna touch on is, that's just, that's just a piece of it, because we will always have new enhancements or additional projects that we wanna install. So, sidewalks are a great example.
You'll get grants, and then in my neck of the woods, and John's neck of the woods, you have the county line road.
Yeah.
So, there's a grant issue there.
And it may be that there's a park facility that we say should last 20 years, Clement Chrome, we just installed it two years ago, we anticipate 18 years from now, we might have to replace that tot lot. Let's say we're 18 years from now, and we're looking at it, and it's in pretty good shape. So, if there's something else that's in worse shape, that's forecasted two years out, maybe that gets bumped to the top of the list. But again, the, the amount stays relatively consistent.
But you can look at, you can look at a decent portion of this budget and say, yep, this road here, I mean, you're gonna have to put a multiple or factor inflation, or this, you know, this park or that park, and then you can figure out, you take that, and then you can. And then you can figure out, you take that, and then you can funnel out what's left. Or, I don't want to say a pet project, because I think safety on North Wayne Avenue isn't a pet project, but you have a grant, and where does that money, where else can the money go?
Yeah, I mean, that would fall into a category of something that's new or an enhancement of some kind somewhere. Yeah, I don't think we'd identify this path. But, yeah. But then, again, if the plan's up and running, and again, this is trying to draw a picture of a future state, something that we're not going to reach by the end of tonight. But someone says, look, we've got a pedestrian safety issue on such-and-such road.
Say, Cambridge Road and Glen Mary, for instance.
Maybe we've got one over there.
But, Bill, you said year one is always difficult, and I think year one is going to be the most difficult thing. Once you can get a schedule going, you know, you suck it up somehow, you figure out how to get year one done. Then you can worry on year five, year 10, year 15, for one thing. Or year one, year seven, year 14, year 21 on the other. And obviously, Jack's right, we're not going to be here, most likely, not on wood. But you'll be able to figure that stuff out. And it's easy for you, and it's a legacy you can pass on to your predecessors.
If, once we get this program up and running, they'll look back on this board and say, well, that's the one that set this up. But I think, I think what we're, maybe we're tiptoeing around is almost taking a bite out of our project list now for our immediate needs. Things that we don't have time to wait a year or two to build this plan up to address. We take that bite, and then we start working towards.
How we fund it.
A plan, a broader plan. Well, when I say take a bite, I mean, let's figure out now how to fund those projects. And so if we get into mechanics of how that works, and you guys know this, but for the benefit of those that may not, you get one chance a year to adjust tax rates, collect, and use that money. For 19, that's gone, or done. Their next chance at that will be in 2020. If we're looking to generate capital now for projects that we want to start addressing now, it's going to be some sort of financing.
Or spending down what we have in the general fund. Do we have some room in there?
We could dip into reserves. We're already doing that on the operating budget. I would advocate against it, but it is, the board's prerogative to do that. Understanding with financing, payments on anything we issue now won't begin until next year. But we could close on a borrowed deal yet this year and get to work, so.
I think we're going to be to issue bonds this year, and money's cheap. I think we have enough that we need, but we got to decide what they are.
Yes. So how do we want to go? Well, I guess.
Money is.
I know what he means.
I don't know.
Do you guys agree with that?
This is good goal setting to me. Like, this is like good goal setting. This is the goal setting that is important.
This is a goal for a very small portion of overall.
This is micro-goal setting.
No, but you're hitting it, you're hitting it piece by piece, and we'll have, what's next? Sewer or, what's next?
Next one's sewer.
Bring it on.
All right, so.
But if we are going to borrow, and we end up needing to borrow for sewer as well, we should do it at once. And not pay too much in issuance costs.
And are we retiring any bonds that would make it possible for us to do this?
So we pay down roughly $2 million in bonds per year?
Well, in '20, we have the ability to borrow six or seven million without affecting taxes.
And let me get some zero coupons. There we go. So what I did is I took out the sewer-specific notes from last year out of this table. So to Commissioner Nagel's point, we are in 2019. Debt service is roughly $4.5 million. We're going to see a significant drop of roughly $1.5 million next year that builds in some capacity to borrow. And then, without seeing a jump in our debt service, we just issue whatever amount we can to refill that. Honestly, depending on which projects the board approves, the list is far greater than what a $1.5 million a year will fund in debt service. But if you even go back a couple of years, debt service is closer to $5 million a year. So if your tolerance for a little bit more annual debt service is higher, then that just means more projects can be taken off the list now.
Zero coupons, and then we don't have to pay any debt service and worry.
In 2019.
We still have a sinking fund, though. You still have to pay.
Well, and that's part of why the debt policy is important to this whole conversation is we certainly, and the borrowing that built this building is a good example. And it's represented in the in the yellow, the bottom line here. You could see that we're not paying a whole lot now. And actually, out of this, $700 or so thousand, $35,000 is principal, the rest is all interest. And then what happens as we get further out, when the building, when the building is in need of repairs, we're paying the most for it. So we just have to be careful with the zero coupon or the wraparound or backend and loaded debt. Because in essence, we're going to take away a future board's capacity to refill whatever debt plan is, or capital plan has been developed.
Because this building wasn't built right, we've got major expenses to deal with.
Well, Bill, it seems based on this that a good number to talk about is the debt service to fill that gap between 20 and 2019, whatever that equates to, and then back into what a bond issue would be, and then try to allocate the projects back to that amount. That's not management, as you were saying, but that is a method by which we might get some consensus to discuss.
So we did that, and then concurrently, we're developing a plan that's more long-term, but at least we're knocking off some of these things.
Yeah, and also, it's kind of transparent. I mean, it's kind of, doesn't hurt the taxpayers because there's that drop-off in the debt service.
Yeah, we're paying for it already.
Yeah, so it's already built in. But the problem is, is that, you know, we could reduce the taxpayers, we could reduce taxes and not spend it, but chances are, we have enough here that are critical that we need to do, so. As long as we keep it at zero, I think people are happy.
All right, so.
Tax increases. Now, this year, we had 6%, and we still haven't paid for any projects.
So we're going to, the other, sorry, Commissioner, just real quick with regard to how the debt is structured. Municipal debt is tax-free, and again, I know most of you know this, but for the benefit of the residents in the room and those that'll be listening later. There are very strict IRS laws that surround municipal debt because it is interest, or it is tax-free. We don't have the same opportunities to refinance. And in fact, the tax law that was adopted two years ago, or, yeah, two years ago now, eliminated municipalities from being able to advance refunds. So now the only, we're limited to very short windows of time where we could go and refund all these. The good news is that you can see this series, the years in which these bonds have all been issued, has been in the time when interest rates have been extremely low. So we have already capitalized on those debt savings. And each time we did that in each of these years, if you can kind of picture this entire table, kind of all the lines simultaneously dropping each time we did a refinancing. And in fact, I keep track of how much those refundings have saved the township. And I know this is small, but by issue, we can take a look at so like $5.5 million in savings for ruining those transactions.
Is refunding the same as calling it in and then issuing cheaper debt? I just want to.
That's exactly.
And the laws now are, what is it, a five-year call, what's a call protection on a bond?
So you can't go less than five years.
After five years, you can call it in.
Yeah, we can structure longer calls if we want, if we want to. I mean, that'll affect the interest rates that we get. We might get lower interest rates today with a longer call, but I'm not sure we'd want to bind ourselves.
Yeah.
But what he's saying is, we can't do an advance refunding, so we can't leave that existing 2012 or 2015 issue out. Escrow it, and then issue new ones. I'd agree. You have to wait till we retire that one.
Yeah, and there's, so we'd have to wait. So we've got, we're in a call window for two of these issues, and that 14 bonds will come out this year. But unfortunately, those bonds were all issued with interest rates that were so low that there's not savings to be had by refunding them with today's rates.
What would this, what would all this, you know, if we do approve a lot of this, what would this do to our debt rating? Would it, you think, would it lower it? Obviously, the more debt you have out there, the more at risk you are, and then the higher the rates that you pay. So if we do, and I don't know, if you have a number that you're looking at, you know, the, we have to do this, we could get away with this, or this is everything. Interest rates are historically low. They've been historically low since 1999, I'd say. But what would that do to our debt rating and our ability, you know, if we have an issue unfortunately going forward, we would need an emergency, you know, loan or have to issue more debt?
And the quick answer is, if we're talking about a borrowing limited to refilling that gap, so if we increase our debt service by about a half million, it's going to be roughly a $7 million issue, maybe seven and a half, depending on what the rates are, that won't even be a blip on the radar, and it won't be a big deal to Moody's at all. What I know, and I know because Moody tells us, what they will look for is, if we do this borrowing coupled with an adoption of a debt policy and the beginnings of a capital policy that is long-term focused, it will only serve to enhance it. We already have a lot of things in our favor. So first of all, we're one notch short of AAA. So we're already in an outstanding position. We've been recognized for strong reserves. They said it could be stronger, but they recognize the 25% we keep now. They do tell us that we have modest debt levels compared to municipalities of our size, so we do have some capacity there. And if we, we have shown as a township that in the past, when we issued debt, we're willing to pay for it either through current resources or a tax increase, 2015 reflected that.
You also did a great job with the books. I think there were 17 questions, and you cleaned all that up. So I think that, and that's to you and your staff.
Well, I appreciate that.
Now, I mean, that's pretty.
What Moody's wants to see is that, and again, they have a whole formulation, it's all public information, you can go find it. They want to see that it's not ad hoc, it's not kind of by the seat of our pants, just picking and choosing it, there's a plan. So if we can, if we're not increasing our debt service, and at the same time, looking more long-term, I think that we can only enhance our position with Moody's.
So, Bill, you gave us to read as, in preparation for this meeting, the CARFAC's presentation back from 2016. And they made recommendations around amending the administrative code for capital funding. Is that what you're speaking of when it comes to the things that Moody's wants to see?
Yes. So the administrative code specifically is Article 4412, the pay-as-you-go capital funding. And this was adopted back in 2008 in response, you know, and I touched on it at the beginning, kind of the township's reevaluation of its entire debt structure and how we fund things going forward. This ordinance was adopted in response to that. So they had identified some good measures to start, but it started with, well, first of all, not borrowing long-term bonds to pay for short-term assets. That was cleaned up really quickly. And then, starting with $150,000, and then increasing that funding annually by $25,000 per year. I look at that today, as a matter of fact, and we'd be at $425,000 if we followed that to a T. And obviously, $425,000 would barely install the sidewalk that we talked about earlier in North Wayne. So the intention was good, and it was a good first step, but it needs to be modified to match what the needs are. A couple other aspects of that. All the proceeds from the sale of fixed assets are dedicated to the capital fund. To the extent we sell assets, which are mostly retired fleet and equipment, that goes back in there. But if any other township assets were to be sold, it would have to go to capital improvement needs. It talks about allocating 5% of all revenues received through audits, Act 511 audits. And again, we're investing more than $1.5 million a year in the pay-as-you-go capital. So clearly, we're far in excess of 5% of what we're getting on the Act 511 audit, which is a couple hundred thousand. So 5% of a couple hundred thousand. And then finally, the fourth bullet point, the board then set future boards up. It's just recognizing the fact that you have, at your sole discretion, the ability to levy millage to dedicate to capital. So CARFAC read through this, and when they were putting that plan together, they recognized that the amounts identified here just aren't adequate enough to fund what's needed. And so something a little bit more robust was needed.
Is this something that you think is still relevant now, two years later, three years later?
Absolutely, even more so now, because look at where we're at.
And so why was this not considered?
Well, I could, at the meeting where it was presented, it was, the plan was dismissed almost immediately based on procedural issues raised by.
I can talk to you about that.
It's all right, it's okay, it's okay.
I voted against it, I can tell you that.
I don't even think it got a vote.
Okay, we can talk about that online, sorry, stupid question. So, all right, so moving forward. It seems to me that you hear that, unless I'm mistaken, that there's appetite on the board for us to try to look at this list, prioritize some of the projects. And I think you've heard from everybody maybe what that could look like around prioritization.
We will get you to do this.
I'm sorry.
You're pointing to the list from the fall. We should, we should look off a new list.
A new list, okay.
I know none of you have seen this list until tonight, so we will get that too, for sure.
Can you put that up on the township website?
Sure, absolutely.
And the idea of issuing a bond to fill that gap? So you would come back to us with, you know, what does it all look like?
If, unless there's any objection from the board, we will contact BFM and get them going. If it's greater than the township manager's threshold to engage them, we'll be on the next agenda to do so.
If we're going to do this, what would be the timing?
Well, that's what we'll have to talk about. Usually, it's 90 days from the time that we adopt the ordinance to when we can close and start spending money. So we start, I mean, we'll want to get going pretty quickly.
Is there consensus for the board that Bill start with this emotion?
Say that again?
Is there consensus from the board that Bill put this motion, so contact our bond council, start to get this?
Well, yeah, I think, yeah, that's true, but let's, but what's the number that that debt service will support at today's rates?
And how much are we looking at?
Seven to seven and a half million.
Seven to seven and a half million.
Well, I'll get, we'll get BFM to run the numbers scientifically, not on a cell phone calculator. And we'll get something a little bit more concrete for you to work with.
That's great. That's great.
That's only two years worth of project.
Yeah, and where does that put us on this now four-page list of projects that we want? And then that's not including other things such as sewer or fire or all the other projects?
Yeah, so that's a great question and one to be answered once we know what those projects are and what the amounts are.
Got to do the prioritization. So when are we contemplating doing that? Because this was supposed to be that meeting, when we had talked about it way back when. People showed up in order to make pitches for their projects. I've got the rest of the night, and I'll actually talk about it right now. If we're not going to, though, we need to have a date, and I'd suggest that date has to be in May. If for no other reason than the fact that we're not going to, like, if we agree that we're going to get started on a project, it's not going to happen if we defer that until August.
Well, is there some work that this staff, you guys feel you need to do with this list in order to help advise us when it comes to prioritizing? I mean, like you said, there are projects here that we may be unaware of that have grants associated with them that are running out, that have, you know, partners in funding that we may be unaware of because the majority of these projects, you know, predate us, this board.
I'd like to see some classification, too, like.
When you, I'd like to see some classification, too, like, is it a public health and safety issue? Is it a maintaining our current assets, like buildings?
Well, here's the recommended ones from the staff.
Yeah, I mean, this, this is, I think, maybe the, a step in that direction, this is obviously, there's going to be more projects than this that ultimately make it. But these are the ones, if you recall last fall, that we said that if we were going to make a list and put some at the top, these were based on outside funding and grants that would, that should be part of it.
Bill, would it make sense to work with outside, I don't know, an outside help to figure out which of these things are grant-eligible? Because I'm sure we have a couple of them that are, but...
I don't think we need outside people to help us with that.
Okay.
We got grants.
Okay, I mean, so can we get more grants on some of, then, let me rephrase the question. Can we get more grants? Are any of these grant-eligible, and how do we get more grants?
There are a lot of them that are eligible. The issues that it comes down to is, we're in competition with everyone across the Commonwealth, though.
Sure.
How we do that.
Well, some of these are...
Do you want to engage lobbyists?
No, 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 I'm, I'm just, so, the reason why I'm asking is, I've, and I'm thinking of like Amy Kaminsky, because you have the County Line Road situation, which is my ward, John's ward, Laura Marion, and I guess we'll argue a little bit of Haverford, and that is more of a grant issue, and Amy said that she can work on the grant, so, and she even could have worked on a grant to get...
With Laura Marion, there could be cost sharing there, so that's going to be a con... So for your, for our benefit, it may be a joint grant, and it may be split by us with Laura Marion or on some percentage. Amy can write any grant application we want, I suggest we bring Laura Marion in.
Sure, but, but Amy said that we could have gotten a grant just for the report, although we didn't do that. We paid for the report.
We could have applied for a grant.
Yeah, so that would have been another way to save money. So should we look at this list, and I know it's a big list, but what, you know, will we...
There's a dozen projects on there that can, grants can be applied for. There's traffic signal projects, there's trail projects, there's pedestrian projects. So we, we know what can be, there's a cost to make the application, and application is no guarantee of a world.
True, but is it...
And then we still, even if we get the grant, we have to have the money on our side.
Sure, well, obviously, that's it, but is the cost of trying to do it, you know, does that, is that a good risk reward? Hey, we may not be able to do it, but let's try to get as much money.
The traffic projects, like the Woodsworth Court, June Eagle, was very costly. The requirements for that grant required a lot of design work. Some of these other grants are less costly to apply for.
Then it makes an easier decision on whether or not, where we prioritize some of these projects as well.
Now, just so you know, though, we've already have to apply for grant extensions, for extensions on these grants, for those projects that were awarded them that are still in our budget as they're coming up.
Those ones that were just on the recommended list?
Some of the ones that are on the recommended list.
Is there a reason that we would not tonight? It looked like that was about $2.5 million out of the seven to seven and a half million that were anticipated, and they've already been recommended by staff. Is there a reason that we wouldn't vote to start moving forward with that tonight?
Can you put that, can you have, expose that?
One of the, one, while we're away from Bill, I'll come back, is the board open to us coming up with recommendations where you may, you will not have to borrow money, would not have to raise taxes to be able to generate the revenue for those?
Yeah, obviously.
But then what are we trying to...
Is there a uniform logging in through the door?
There are options that we can listen, it's not just certain ones. I mean, we have, we have the Cresta report, and we own a lot of very small slivers of land throughout the township that, they're expensive to us to maintain. They don't serve any purpose for parks or anything else. Do we make a decision to offload those? Because again, those are not, are off the rolls for taxes, but should we sell slivers of land on corners here, over here, all these bits and parts that, they're not relevant to what we do or the services we provide?
My wish on that would be to keep them separate. Let's look at the projects we have that we need. I'm going to bet you that with that bit of debt service that we have in the bond, you'll be able to get almost most of your desired ones in there. The Cresta individual dispositions, we should look at that and dispose of it, and that money should come back. But I wouldn't, I wouldn't tie them together, they're not...
I just think, but there's, there'll be suggestions by category for the board to say, we should look at those.
And I'm not going to look at them, I mean, you can't, the information can't help.
Was that something that CARFAX would look at?
We, you know, we have, we have enough... It's got everything on it.
That would be good for a bus tour, where we could see all these slivers of land that we don't need.
You couldn't, you couldn't get anybody to get on a bus.
Drive by. You might, you might drive past a bus.
Did they try to do that?
Nobody would get on the bus.
Yeah, no one would go.
I wanted to go.
There are, there are nobody else would go. My guess is there's probably two or three suggestions that we remain for consideration.
Well, so then I guess that it could be options, so we're just with some options.
Absolutely. Is this building one of those slivers of land that are totally useless, valuable slivers of land? It's one of those that, you know, you got to have, that'll be for discussion.
In public works, so I would say not public works and not this one, that's what I would keep. But again, I, it's a separate issue, because we have this, these projects, and then we have the sewer project, let's talk about that, and then as the third component, I would say, let's look at those dispositions.
Bill, could you go back to the recommended projects for a second?
You're looking at them now.
Oh.
This is just in a, maybe an easier way to read it.
You've got 18 different spreadsheets for every single one of the same projects, slicing and dicing them differently.
Well, this is the detail, and this is just a pivot table that's summarizing it.
Sure. So that's about $2.5 million?
Yes.
Total over the course of six years?
Well, and understand that, like, so for the cap, the road resurfacing.
That's paid for.
That's an annual amount every year. I actually wouldn't include that in a borrowing that we do. All the other projects, yes, so on these out years, I wouldn't even include that.
Okay. Is there any reason that we would not tonight vote to approve those, given that they've been amended?
Well, actually, I, I had a thought, and we talked about this briefly during the budget, but it didn't get a lot of traction because we weren't having this kind of discussion. But I don't want any of the Willows Park Preserve folks to throw broken bottles at me again. But an idea is, if the board's serious about raising capital for cap, for other projects, we can peel back money that's not spent on the Willows yet, that still is going to take some time to vet out, part of the 1.6, use them to address these projects immediately, and then add the Willows to whatever we're going to borrow. We're still going to get the money later this year, so we'll still have the 1.6 in our pocket, ready to go later this year, but this would allow us to address these projects immediately.
There's no danger if we do that, that we're going to run out of money? We have plenty of money in terms of borrowing capacity, reserve funds.
And it sounds like the board's on the same page with borrowing money.
I, I would not recommend it, given, I wouldn't vote, you ask my, for my vote for that, I wouldn't do it. I'd leave that for the Willows Park, because it will be perceived as taking that money away, no matter what. And it, and it could run afoul of some provision or somewhere.
And that would be undoing, I think, the vote of a prior...
We talked about it. I wouldn't, I wouldn't spend that, I just wouldn't, I would just leave that, I would leave that.
I would, I would look at that in the same light as I would look at, like, the Matson Ford Pedestrian Bridge. We've entered into a contract, we have signed agreements, in the, in the same capacity with that contractor as we do Willows Park Reserve. It's just the timing of when the funds are needed.
I think Willows Park Reserve actually comes ahead of that, because Matson Ford, we have no funding for, no promise for.
We're starting Monday.
But they're starting Monday! I don't know, I'm talking about the timing of when the cash is...
From a priority standpoint, works against basics.
But the school district's committed to their project.
Yes, as are we, it's just we're...
Yeah, the, the board may, might vote to do that, I would say. I would put up my hand and say, no, leave that. I would draw down, I'd draw down other funds. But, and also, as I said before, I will give up that Camp Presser Road Plan tree, Eagle Signal. That one we do not, that one, we have a grant that's been approved, I, I will forego that, that's one that we don't need to do, and I would put that money back to everyone else to use.
Well, let's put that to a vote. I'd suggest that what we do with that intersection is, we just have the lights facing into the first ward and not the second ward. It'll cost half as much, to be fair.
We're, we're making really good progress here, let's, let's stay on track.
It's to benefit the entire township, it's not board-focused, all, everyone benefits. I'd drive through that intersection.
I'd vote, I'd vote to put that money back and use it for other projects like your sidewalk, Jack.
That's so generous of you, Chris.
So I'm going back to what I asked before, is there an appetite to greenlight these projects now, given that it sounds like we're going to have more than $7 million? Apparently, my $2.5 million number, you're saying we can just talk about $1 million. These are the projects that the staff has already recommended coming into this. Or approved by prior boards. Or approved by prior boards.
So, it'll be, we've already approved all these projects, though?
It's just a matter of funding.
Some of them that have been around for a bit, so they're, and they, I might provide, Mr. White will start updating numbers.
Can you...
So I'm concerned about voting...
Well, I, I, sorry, I, I think that we should at least, sorry to interrupt you, Lisa. I think that we should, we're going to bring it to a vote now, I think we should bring it to a vote at the next meeting, and at least have a chance for some of the people that aren't here to digest it and come back with their opinion. I think you're right, I, I would vote for it, I would just feel more comfortable being able to sleep on it as opposed to doing it right now. But I, but I would be, but I am in favor.
I'm concerned about voting on something we didn't have on an agenda or anything, so we made no notice.
One other thought that I, that I just had, too, is sensitive to the North Wayne project issues, again, conversations have been going on for years that keeps getting stalled out. Last fall, actually, the trees were included in the 18 budget, were not re-appropriated for 19. So maybe if this goes on the next agenda, if, if there's a direction from the board to do so, we can, we can add that to the, whatever list we're coming up with.
Oh, I'm absolutely going to advocate for trees and for paving, particularly now that we have that nice paved stretch of North Wayne, and we're going to have the stamp portion, it's time for us to finish our piece and do the parking spots.
I will say, so timing is critical for the trees as well as the asphalt. So in that memo, I noted that, you know, there was a very specific fall window, late summer fall window, we wanted to get the trees in, and since it's all in the same area where the paving is, we do need to stagger it a little bit, and there actually is a deadline on the paving, too, so.
When is the deadline again? What do you need to vote from us, I'm the question?
To give us time to get this designed and get it in in the fall as soon as possible would be best. I don't mean tonight, I mean at, at the May...
May 20th?
May 20th meeting.
Or we have a May, we, we have another special meeting, this meeting on the 13th.
Even the May 20th meeting allows us, gives us time to get the bid out and get this stuff in, but I would say that, that would be at the latest, Commissioner.
If you could also authorize us to go and conduct to go after the North Wayne Avenue paving that they pulled, that was scheduled last year, I believe that I'll be able to pay for it.
So they didn't defer it. They, usually they defer it when the utilities go through, they say, we'll do it next year. They didn't defer it, they just pulled it from the table.
Did they, did they end up coming in? Did we talk, did they come in this week, or they're going to, or last week? Did they come in to talk about the sprawl road, you know, the culvert there?
That's this week.
Oh, that's this week. Maybe you just add that to the conversation.
That's their culvert.
Oh, I know that's their culvert.
That's their culvert.
I know that's their culvert.
So I'm hearing, we're not involved on this tonight, and frankly, there's nothing on here that I don't want to pass, I don't want to do it piecemeal, but maybe by the May 20th meeting, we have to commit, we need from staff a list of your recommendations comfortably in advance so that we can do research on our own, and then we actually have to vote on May 20th.
And we'll also layer in then, before then, the sewer, we'll have to think about that, too, because that, that's a good, big number, right?
The sewer is our May 13th meeting.
Right, so that could, because that, that's going to be 20 million or 10 million, that's going to bear on this, so.
Zero.
I'd like to look at maybe, maybe zero, but, you know, whatever the need is.
It could sell more or...
Yeah, that's, yeah, no, it should be something.
Well, if the rest of the board agrees with that, we can, I mean, we know what the projects are for sewer, we can, we can layer that in.
Well, we'll talk about it on Friday.
Yeah.
All right, well, I think I'm hearing from Commissioner Larkin that you'll need something in advance of even that, in terms of a project list to consider to be prepared for the 20th.
Or, or is it this list that...
So, for me, I need this list, in my own head, I think of sewer and stormwater is totally separate because they're independent revenue streams.
So we're not looking at the borrowing list, you're looking at the, absolutely, we're going right now list, because I think one will be larger than the other.
Yeah. I, I am hearing from others that they would be interested as well, however, in seeing the borrowing list, and that's not crazy to me. I wouldn't mind seeing the bigger one.
Well, you're going to get the whole list, we're just, we're just trying to figure out how we're going to organize it, so...
Can we get the whole list for the meeting on the 13th, and then just suss out the stuff for the sewers, and talk about that on the 13th, and then everyone will have, everything all as one piece? And then we'll vote on it, vote on it on the 20th?
And, and Bill, while you're, while you're, you know, doing a lot of work, can you tell us how the mercantile tax is looking this year? Do you have an idea?
I, I have an idea, but I'll, I'll continue to qualify that heavily until we get past May 15.
Okay, all right, so you're...
Which is the...
Okay. But you'll, you'll be able to speak to that after May 15?
I will tell you that on the aggregate, business taxes look really good through the first quarter.
Okay.
But until we get through the deadline, I don't know if that's a timing difference or if it's, if it's real broken.
Okay, but you'll be able to speak to it at a later...
Oh, absolutely, okay, great, that's, that's nice.
Okay, so, are you guys comfortable if you like you have what you need, Steve?
I'm sorry, ma'am, you want the recommended list fully vetted out for the May 20th meeting? May 13th meeting?
So, it's this, plus I think I heard the addition of trees, the, for the Wayne Business District, and the parking, the resurfacing, Jack, yes? Parking, the parking resurfacing, so trees and parking resurfacing for Wayne Business District, okay. And then, if it's passed, do we, and then we'd like this, do you want the sewer projects in there? Do people want?
Yeah, we, we need to know what that is. And if, if, if we get, if it's lucky, we may be able to keep it all within that, that debt service, but I thought we were going to look at a bigger number for the sanitary sewer than, than that. So it seems to me that, you know, there's going to be some impact that we have to talk about, and, so your, your list of past this projects, or might have a hard time, but we'll have to wait and see.
Hey, yeah, I know, yeah, everybody's packing up their laptops and stuff, but the one sort of issue that we really haven't talked about is, as I understand it, we're talking about debt to fund the capital projects for this year, we've got no expectation that we'll have a reliable basis, more income coming in next year and in the future years, which means to fund capital projects for next year and for future years, we do more debt, we have a revenue problem that we really haven't talked about.
Well, you're free to vote for raising taxes. So there's, there's ways to cover that, you either raise taxes or we cut spending, so I'll, I'll be advocating...
I agree with you.
And I'll be advocating for cutting spending, and, you know, if we, if we have some assets to sell, I, I, I'd look at that, but a lot of these projects that we're talking about are, I think, going to be costing more.
Residents come and talk to me, they come in, they show up in meetings, and they say they want stuff from the township to do, and I don't really hear a lot of people telling me that they want lower taxes. I'm not trying to be a snark, I'm genuinely saying, at the end of the year, we're going to have, everything sounds snarky to you, particularly this, is what I'm saying. At the end of the year, we're going to have to make a decision about the budget. If the residents really feel like we need to not raise taxes, then they need to tell me that they're comfortable with not having additional stuff.
I think one of the things we did say, so, we were looking at these things as the immediate, what can we take care of? And then concurrently, looking at what we were going to do for a long-term plan. And I think those things, you know, revolve around, you know, what are our priorities or goals for the township? And then I, you know, what are, what are we comfortable, what are the ways to fund it?
Yeah, so...
Well, we got to talk about a debt policy.
Yeah, and then changing the administrative code, and so there's a whole... Yeah, and then changing the administrative code and so there's a whole.
There'll be an asset list with annual amortization that we talked about with the road resurfacing. We apply that to parks. We can apply that to a whole section of our, like, signals. We could apply that to those areas of the budget. And then we'll, we'll have that subtotal. Then we'll have a total of the projects that are on our list that are new assets or enhanced assets in some way. And then we'll have a number. We'll have it, just so you know, we'll have it spread out over years based on trying to find a level amount year over year. But that doesn't mean that projects, obviously projects, you have the alternate authority to move those as you see fit. But it'll, it'll be the basis for the next conversation on what we do for 2020. And hopefully, again, moving forward.
Yeah, this, I, this conversation isn't over. You know, I mean, it, it will continue.
Really? Uh-oh.
But, but I mean, not just dealing with it at budget time. You know, we need to, and what are the things we need to just put in, put into place? So, are you guys feel comfortable? Does everyone here feel comfortable?
I think that's good. I think we got a lot accomplished. I think it's.
I think we did. I think it was really genial and.
It's better to be upstairs.
Meeting, yeah, I, it was good. I think all the community input was good.
Thank you, Bill. Thank you.
Sewer's May 20th. May I get a?
So move.
Whoa, 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 I'm sorry. May 20th is the vote on the 13th? So.
13th, I thought was the sewer.
So we'll have the projects. Yeah, the vote will be either 13th. It'll be on the, we'll make sure it's on the agenda when we, we'll see what the timing is. So it'll either be the 13th or the 20th.
The 20th would be great. It should be at a real basic meeting. I, I would be for this. This is a figure issue. It should be at a.
You can just leave your contact information with Jennifer. We'll make sure we get in touch with you.
Okay.
With the agendas and places.
All right, anything else?
Some of, some of.
All right.